All right. Welcome, everybody, to the Northborough Select Board meeting of the fifteenth of November two thousand twenty-three. My name is Mitch Cohen and I chair this merry bunch. We have an exciting meeting tonight where we are hopefully, well, we're certainly going to be interviewing and hopefully naming the next town administrator for the town. We have three excellent candidates. I will say, on behalf of the Town Administrator Screening Committee, it was a really good process this time. Last time, we were pleased with the candidates. This time, it was another notch or two up, maybe more than that. It was a really good, good bunch. It was very hard to choose three. We were recommended and decided that we would limit it to three, but it was, it took a lot of discussion to, to name the three. We could have probably named more, but, but we named the best three, definitely. I'm very, very excited. They've all, they all have great experience. They've all interviewed in multiple places. My biggest worry before tonight is one or more of them would get jobs in other towns because they've been actively involved in searches. So, we're waiting for the return of one of our members before we do the first interview, but I thought it would be good to, to see if anybody wanted to talk about questions we wanted to ask. I know everyone has seen the, their application documents and essays to questions that were asked in writing by the screening committee. You know, I think the, the suggestion was ask, you know, everyone should have time for at least two questions asked. Something rather generic, if you want, and then the second question can be, you know, from their essays or from their resumes, but whatever you want to do. There are, there are really no restrictions on asking the same question of all candidates. There, there is at the screening committee level because those are private executive session interviews for, for legal reasons. They have to be. This is completely different. So, you don't have to ask the same question of all candidates, but you can if you want to. I think what we will do, because Lisa and I were on the screening committee, so we've met these candidates before, I think what I'll do is I will start with Kristin, then Laura, then Julianne, then Lisa, then back to me for an order of questions, and maybe I'll switch it up in the reverse order, starting with Julianne, something like that the second time. So that Lisa and I should have the last opportunity, and the three of you should have the first. Is my thinking? If everyone's okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Any, anybody have any questions?
I mean, do you want to know what our questions are?
No, no. I mean, you can, does anyone have any questions about the process?
No, that sounds great. Thank you.
We've kind of done this before.
Well, actually, you know, the first, the first question that you asked the last time was something about, tell us something.
Yeah.
Maybe that should be, it's a good icebreaker.
Yes, yeah, so I will, I will do that first, and then I will, then I will throw it to, to Kristin.
I misunderstood. I thought we were going to jump in.
Yeah, I should have explained it better, that, yeah, I will ask the candidate, you know, tell, tell us something, something about yourself that might not be apparent from your application documents, and tell us anything you think we should know. And that's kind of an opening if, I don't think there is anything terribly controversial about any of these three people, but that's, that's an opportunity. If there's something they feel like, all right, you're going to find out about this thing.
This keeps coming up, yeah.
Yeah, that's an opportunity for them. It's just, I just ask that all the time. Again, I'm not, not implying we're going to get any bombshells.
Okay.
Tonight, but that's, that's from them. And at the end of the hour, I will close it out by offering them the opportunity to ask us any questions that they have.
Mm-hmm.
And then between them, there will be the sort of regular questions. We'll just go around and around until we run the one time.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, okay.
Okay. Sitting with us at, at the table, we have interim town administrator Mike Gallagher, interim assistant town administrator Diane Whackel. And other than that, we're, we're, we're ready, other than we're waiting for our last member to, to re-arrive, and that's all right.
And we're starting with Mr. Bridges.
Yep, yep, we're going six-twenty. We have scheduled for Jeff Bridges, seven-twenty-five. We have scheduled Clancy Main, eight-thirty. We have scheduled Tim McInerney. So, that'll be the order that we'll do the interviews. Each will be, you know, approximately an hour, which will give us about five minutes break between my suggestion, this is, you know, from, from our experts, is we don't have a discussion of the candidate between, and then after the last interview, maybe we take a five-minute break and then, then have discussion and see if we can make a decision. And, you know, my hope is, is, is that we can make a decision, whether it's easy or hard to do.
Yeah.
We have scheduled a meeting for tomorrow night, where we could resume if we need to, for deliberations. You know, it would be certainly easier on the three candidates and probably easier on everybody and staff and everything else if we can get this sort of, if we can make a decision tonight, but that's posted in case. And then also on our agenda at the end is an executive session where we can talk about anything specific we want to negotiate in the contract to kick off that process. We'll only have that executive session if and only after we make a decision, because that has to be, there can't be any deliberations about who to choose in that executive session. So, we'll only have that if we, if we do name someone.
Does, does the contract have to be discussed, because after our choice is made?
Yeah.
Then, then there's the whole check, you know, and, so we have a little time, right, is what I'm saying?
Yeah, it takes your in-depth, about two, two weeks, yeah.
The DI?
Yeah.
Background investigation?
Yeah, so we, we, I assume we would negotiate the contract simultaneous, not execute it until we get the background investigation report from you and it's satisfactory.
And, and your offer, if you make it?
Yeah.
Is a condition?
Yes.
On the successful completion of the background investigations?
Yeah.
You see.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, you want to negotiate the contract before?
It's to...
You get the background check?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we should do that, do them simultaneous.
So, you're thinking of doing that tonight?
That's on the, on the agenda.
Unless we, unless we can put it on for tomorrow?
We could put it on for tomorrow, but again, everyone has recommended to us, and I think is advisable, if we, if we can make a decision tonight, that's better.
Well, I just...
And then the executive session is to provide some guidance to the people that will, from the entire board, on the specifics of, of anything particular we're looking for in the contract.
But you're still, I mean, if it goes long and you're rushing and rushing, this is one time.
Mm-hmm.
This is one of the most important things we do.
Yeah, and we will have the opportunity to meet an executive session again during the contract negotiation process, and of course, to approve, to, to consider it at the end, the same. This is a dark, last, last time, we did not meet an executive session to kick that off.
Right.
And there was some feedback of, some people had, some members had particular ideas for things we wanted, so I thought it was good to have, have it as an option for tonight.
All right.
Okay. All right, it being basically six-twenty, are we ready to meet our first candidate?
I'm looking forward to it.
We are.
Okay, great. Lisa, while you were out, what we decided to do is that I'm going to, I'll do the, tell us something about yourself, then we'll go Kristin, Laura, Julianne, you, and me for order of questions, because you and I have had the opportunity to, to meet and question these candidates before.
Hi. Well, board, I want to introduce Jeff Bridges. Jeff has thirty-plus years of municipal management experience. He's worked in a number of states, but more recently, he's been in Massachusetts for about six years or so. So, Jeff Bridges for Select Board.
Which going in to see you again.
Hi. Nice to meet you. Welcome to Northborough.
Thanks for coming. Nice to see you again.
Nice to see you again, Jeff. Thank you very much for joining us tonight and welcome to Northborough. I will, I will, it's my, my privilege to welcome you to Northborough and ask you to tell us something about yourself, maybe something that would be apparent from your application documents, and let us know of anything that you think we should know about yourself.
Thank you for the opportunity. I'm honored to be here. For those of you that participated in the first round, you probably, you've heard this, so it'll be new to, to some, not to others, but I am a Massachusetts native. My entire family's from Massachusetts, father in, mother side. Born in Lynn, moved to, moved to Newburyport, and then due to my father's work, we moved around the country, winding up in New York, where I graduated high school. My wife and I are both from New York. We've been together since high school, so that's something that doesn't appear on my resume. Something, what brings me here tonight, and this is what I think I want you to know, is that this is a tremendous opportunity for a local government professional. That's why I'm here. I think this would be attractive to anybody that is, considers their profession local government, and I'm excited about this opportunity and excited about working perhaps for the town of Northborough.
Thank you very much. What we're going to do is we're going to go up and down the aisle with some questions, and we'll start with Vice Chair Kristin Wixted.
Hi.
Hi.
So, thank you for coming in tonight.
Thank you.
So, I suppose if you've done your homework, you know that we've been without a town administrator since our town administrator, who was here for many, many years, left last So, can you tell me why you didn't apply in the spring? Because we had a, we, I don't know if you know, we had a, around then.
Sure, sure. Well, under the ICMA Code of Ethics, a manager is supposed to give at least two years to, to their town or city.
Okay.
And in the spring of last year, I was within my first or early second year of my time with Spencer.
Okay.
And that would not have allowed me to fulfill that obligation under the tenets of the ICMA Code of Ethics.
Okay, fair, good answer. Thank you. And then, since that was kind of a quickie, I just have another basic question, because I, so I've been on the board for about two and a half years, and I've learned a lot about what a town administrator does, especially actually in this period of time when we've been with interim town administrators, or we had our original assistant town administrator being interim for a while, and now we have Diane, sometimes, some days Diane, who's our interim assistant, running the show, and I see all the different pieces of the job. There's so many different things a town administrator has to do. So, I would love to know what pieces of it you find most interesting, and what you think your strengths are, and what you think you could work on.
My strengths have always been the budget and finance side of local government. That's kind of my bread and butter. My, my MPA from Marist focused on local government finance.
Yeah.
I enjoy bud, preparing a budget, communicating budgets, analyzing those things, and that is one of my strengths. I served as a financial advisor for towns, excuse me, for cities and counties in Kansas after I left the town of Weathersfield. I became a financial advisor that aided and performed bond issue sales and bond issue preparation for cities and counties in Kansas. I enjoyed that. So, the finance budget side is one of my strengths. I also believe collective bargaining is one of my strengths. I enjoy that process very much. It doesn't have to be adversarial, but I enjoy it. I think I've been successful at that in Weathersfield and successful in Sturbridge, and we finished all three contracts in Spencer earlier this year. So, those are the two things I'm most, I enjoy most about the job. The HR side, probably the details of the HR side, not the recruiting so much or, or hiring people, but the details of the HR, family medical leave, the intricacies of some of those things are probably where I need more practice.
Mm-hmm.
Those kind of things.
And what about interesting? Just purely like, this is really interesting. I love this part of my job.
I like building things.
Great.
I like building things.
That's easy.
I like progress. I like to see something, and maybe not building things, but I like to see something that went from an idea to an outcome.
Yeah.
And whatever that may be.
Okay.
Right?
Great, thank you.
Laura?
Thank you, well, welcome. Thank you so much for, you know, for, for joining us today. So, as you're probably aware, Northborough does have several pretty big budget items, and I loved all the information that you shared from a budgeting perspective in your essay, answer questions. Some of the projects that we're looking at include the fire station, new town hall renovation and rebuild of elementary schools. We've got a newly acquired building at Four West Main Street, and then we've got the White Cliffs. When we're thinking about your budgeting background, how will you use your experience in terms of budget development, financial planning to prioritize and really help us make smart financial decisions with some really expensive projects?
Yes. Well, in local government, you can't do everything you want to do at once.
Yeah.
So, I think the most important thing is to help the community work through a prioritization process and understand what your priorities are. And part of that process will be understanding what you want to accomplish with each, with each project, what it's going to cost to renovate, build, acquire, do whatever, and then a, a, a practical application of to, total cost of ownership on those projects. What are you going to pay for energy? How do you have to clean it? How do you have to maintain it? Those kind of things all go into those considerations when you look at prioritization. And at the end of the day, the community's going to have to decide which is the most important and which is the second most important, which is the third. We did that very much in Andover, Kansas, when we were a very small city, but growing very rapidly, and we had to build new facilities. And we went through a planning process on a police station, a library, and a city hall, and identified those priorities, and systematically went through all three of those in terms of, you know, what, what was next, and we got it done. So, pretty much part of that process of prioritization.
And then from a budgeting perspective, you know, how did you, how did you go through that process?
Well, once you understand what's your priority?
Yeah.
You look at how that particular phase of that priority, maybe it's still under construction, so you're looking at temporary financing, or you've taken out a portion of a bond, and are you going to pay interest on that? Are you going to roll the final bond into a construction bond or a final bond after temporary notes? And then what do you own at the end of that fiscal year or into the next fiscal year? How many months of energy do you have to pay if the building's complete or incomplete? So, you just have to understand where you are in that process or where you're going to estimate to be in the process. If the building's totally open, you're going to go back to those original assumptions about total cost of ownership and operations and implement those in the budget and see how that works. But it's a multi-year perspective. You, every year you finish a budget, you have to have an understanding of where you are going to be next year in the budget, because you have certain things that are going to increase anyway, right? Payroll costs are going to increase. Your pension contributions are going to increase. You were fortunate, the last couple of years, your health insurance didn't move, but I'm sure maybe electricity did or natural gas did, and once you get a handle on those costs, you can kind of understand what something is going to do two years from now.
Thank you.
Julianne?
So, I'm going to just follow up on Laura's question a little bit. You talked about Andover, Kansas, and the, the many projects that you had to undertake. How, how did you get the community to cooperate and, and even participate in the whole process?
Um, the community, we were fortunate in Andover. The community was very enthusiastic about making progress in the community. We had a very supportive community, from the schools to the town to parks. It's only been, I don't know that a bond issue has failed in Kansas in the last twenty years. And for some of the town facilities, or city facilities, I'm sorry, I got to change verbiage here, we were fortunate in that in, in Kansas, you can do a, a special purpose sales tax. So, we built the police station with general obligation bonds, and then we rolled into the, rolled into using a special purpose sales tax for the library and the town hall. And once those, once those buildings were paid for, that sales tax would disappear, and then the city would initiate it for the next project. That allowed the school district to, which was growing very rapidly, use the general obligation bond tool for their projects. So, when I was there, we did a fifty-two million dollar bond issue, and this is early two thousands, to build a second high school, a second middle school, and two elementaries and renovate two other elementaries, because the schools were the driving force behind the growth in Andover. So, through a combination of different methods, we were able to do these things, which were very well received by the public. Yeah, so, we used the tools in our toolbox, and the public was very supportive. Recently, the public supported another over a hundred million dollar bond issue in Andover to tear down an old high school that was built in the early nineties and rebuild it because it was old, and then do some other schoolwork. So, that community is now, not when I left, but now is one of the wealthiest in Kansas and one of the most successful.
Wow.
Yeah.
Okay, so for my...
It's a different, it's a very different, unique, unique condition there, yeah.
So, for my real question, all right. So, from your perspective, what are Northborough's strengths, weaknesses, and unique characteristics? And if you've been able to learn anything about the community, recognizing that we have all of the above, how would you capitalize on our strengths and our, and specifically our character, location, and natural resources?
There's a lot to unpack in that one. Okay, strength is, I think, your record of prog, progressive local government, your record of stability in the local government, your financial strength, and your continued monitoring of your financial strength, I think is, is, is your strength, right? You're, you haven't, you're an organization that understands what it takes to be successful, right? A weakness is, I think it's temporary. You're in this kind of hiatus on a lot of stuff, but it's going to be solved here in the not-too-distant future, right? And then, what was the third one?
Some of our unique characteristics, like our, you know, our river, our trails, or...
I was going to say that. You're, from a economic development perspective, you have the river, which if, for those communities that do have rivers and are, are able to redevelop those effectively, they become very large attractions, and then you get other, other benefits from those off the river, right? I think that's a benefit that needs to be explored and developed to the greatest extent possible and used as kind of a catalyst for maybe other things in the community.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Did I get all of it?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Excellent.
Hi.
I was going to say, your relationship with Boston and some other things are other strengths that you can play on, in transportation networks and all those good things.
Uh-huh. That's very true.
Yeah.
Well, then I, hi.
Hi.
Nice to see you again. And as you're saying that, I'm thinking of, of down in Rhode Island, how they've done Firewater, and how that all started, and how now it's being volunteered by people not only in Rhode Island, but Massachusetts and Connecticut, and it's just fabulous, so. Maybe we can do a Firewater down on Ask Whoever. Or just set it on fire.
Oh, gosh.
I joke. Okay, I have a, a three-part question.
Oh, my, should have wrote a piece of paper.
Yes, yes. Northborough has a history and unique identity. What is your strategy, you just, you've already said it, for economic development, tracking business in Northborough while preserving the town's heritage and character? So, now we've already talked about the water, which I like. Don't have to go through that again. So, the second is, do you feel, or if you feel that increased affordable housing is one of the methods to do this, what are the pros and cons to that?
Mm-hmm.
And the third is, MBTA housing is a topic that is also being mandated by the state. And again, what are the pros and cons to doing that?
Well, the pros and cons with housing have always been, well, you're going to, it's, it creates more people, right? More people, you need more services, particularly schools and so forth and so on. But you need more people, you need more housing. You have to find that balance. And when you look at affordable housing, there's a balance to that as well. I think you need a healthy mix in any community of apartments and housing that can support different income groups, because you need those different income groups in your, in your community. It's mostly called workforce housing, right? It's not about, it's about being a community that all people can live in, but it needs to be a mix. The MBTA issue, that's a tough issue, because those things come and you, thou shall. And it's very difficult when you're on the receiving end of a thou shall to somehow believe there's a partnership, right? It's more of a, not a partnership, it's a thou shall, and you have to find those balances again, and what can you do? What can your community absorb? What are your long-term plans? And how are you going to work in a partnership to achieve those goals? Being not in an MBTA community today, I'm not intimately familiar with the issues, but I've watched other communities kind of push back on some of those things, understandably because some of those things. We had similar housing issues in Connecticut and other states I worked in, and a lot of the issues, you know, surrounded themselves around infrastructure, right? Do you have the water and sewer capacity to have this kind of housing? Do you have transportation for this kind of housing? And I just don't mean public transportation, but what's it do to your roads? What's it do to, to your other infrastructure, and can you support it? And I think all those things have to kind of play into manage growth, which is really what we all want, manage growth, and all those considerations go into, to those things.
Okay, I just want to go back a little bit on the affordable housing. Have you, have you already done some affordable housing units or, you know, been a part of that? And how do you, how do you take the developer, who's the one, who's the catalyst in creating, choose to do something where he's not making as much of a profit as he might have made if it was not affordable housing?
Some communities actually require it as part of their zoning code. We don't do that, and in Spencer, we're, I didn't do it in Spencer, didn't do it in Sturbridge, I did it in Kansas. We, we allowed the use of federal income tax credit financing to help the developer pay for the development, because they were, they receive the tax credits on their income. And in response, the developer had to produce twenty-five percent of the units that were low to moderate income housing, and it worked out for everybody. And those are some of the tools. So, you can require it, or you can give bonus densities, you can add the number of units above and beyond what your zoning provides, and all those tools should be thought of, discussed, and incorporated into some kind of program if you want to use those tools. You're right in that you're not going to make as much money, and the downside, particularly on a redevelopment project, is you've got a big hurdle to overcome, particularly if you've got an older building that's got asbestos, lead, whatever else the, you know, the chemical of the day was, and that has to be remediated, and then go in and build new units. It, it's an economic disadvantage for, for the developer. So, those things come into consideration in whether you're doing a hundred percent market rate units or fifty percent market rate units versus affordable housing. So, there's no magic bullet to all of this. It's very site, site-specific, particularly when you're dealing with redevelopment or green space. Green space is much easier, because you're not dealing with something that's already there, or you have to clean it up or whatever it is. So, I guess it depends. But in, we use tax credit financing, we use some, we used a TIF in Connecticut to help do some housing. So, there's tools. You can't use a TIF for straight-up housing in a town in Massachusetts. I had that conversation with Mass Development the other day and with some other people. That should be a tool we can use, because why not? But you've got CPA funds that can help do some affordable housing, and how do you mix and match with all of these different tools to, to get the outcome you want?
Okay, thank you.
Great. Back over to my end. I appreciate the, the answer you gave to Kristin on her question about why didn't you apply in there, because I didn't realize that the ICMA had a Code of Ethics that, that said that you should stay at a, a town for at least two years, and I, I appreciate that, but it makes, makes me think of another question. You have been in Spencer for a little bit over two years, and prior to that, you were in Sturbridge for about two and a half years. I appreciate you had some very long tenure in positions in Connecticut and in Kansas. But it begs the question, is something going on in Spencer that makes you want to look for something here? Or if not... Or if not, you know, we, we hope to hire somebody that will stay for more than a couple of years, so.
I agree, and you should, should have that expectation. Been with Spencer about two years. Right now, today, I'm spending a lot of time, and I mentioned this to the other committee, looking at yesterday. That's what I'm doing, spending most of my time. I'm looking at yesterday, when I prefer to look at tomorrow. And we're looking at yesterday at the expense of tomorrow, at least my perception of what we're doing. I don't believe that's good for the community, and it's not what I want to do.
So that's at the direction of, of the board there?
No, it has nothing to do with Board of Selectment. It has to do with some other parties in the, in the organization.
Okay. You don't have to go into too much detail.
But first and foremost, and we talked about this, this is the only search I'm in. Because I do believe Northborough is unique in the community of communities in terms of a local government professional and what you can offer in terms of just a challenge and a local government experience, right?
And then the other half of that Sturbridge, which you were at, so those were the two town administrator positions you've had in Massachusetts. Two and a half years?
Little over two and a half. I believe COVID changed a lot of expectations, I believe, and, and assumptions. I worked with great people on the board, but there was, at the end of the day, some differences there. And rather than, rather than jeopardize positive relationships I had with people I considered friends and coworkers on the Board of Selectment, I said, you know what, I think it's best, right? Let's not have tension, and we'll just find something else. And as a professional in the field, I think that's my responsibility, right? This is what I do for a living. I, I'm not going to, I don't want to jeopardize relationships and positivity because there is, seems to be a different page, right? I think that's, that's where I'm at. But I, you know, you go into every position with the expectation you're gonna be there a while, right? And I know, and it's tough because it's a two-way street, right?
Okay, appreciate your answer. Question.
So a little more sort of in that vein, I was gonna ask you about your management style. I have had conversations with, over the course of my tenure, I've had conversations with various department heads. And I've had conversations about everything from events at the library and protests there. And we need a town administrator who's going to support our library staff a hundred percent, all the way to should, well, I guess other towns are saying maybe some department heads can choose to work from home one day a week. So is that something that Northborough should be looking at? And that would obviously be the town administrator's call, that kind of thing. Would you just, and just sort of like how, I mean, I read in your, I read your essay questions, and they were very helpful, but I would like for you to sort of just speak to management style and support for your staff and tough choices, maybe.
Tough choices, yes. My management style is very much inclusive. I believe I work with people. They're my coworkers, not my subordinates. I work for the board primarily, and I'm here to implement the board's policies and the community's policies when it comes to whatever those may be. Every staff member is unique. Every staff member has their own expectations. Every staff member has their own aspirations. And it's my job to understand those, encourage those to the best of my ability, but keep everybody kind of on the same page. When it comes to can this person work from home versus this person work from home, that is very much something that I think the board would have to kind of come to grips with and have a policy on that. Because it needs to be consistent across the board, right? If we're gonna let this person do it versus this person, which department, blah, blah, blah. I'm a big customer service person. I believe that local government, at the end of the day, is a customer service organization. And we need people available to provide customer service, right? So how someone works from home and then provides, you know, those are the questions I would ask. Big fan of libraries, if you ask the librarians I've worked with, you know, they're gonna say, I hope, I hope that I support literacy in all its forms, those kind of things. But yeah, those kind of issues, I, I believe that I'm the go-between between the Board of Selectment and the staff. If there's an issue with a staff member, I would hope you would call me and say, hey, or a question, you'd call me offline, right? I don't believe that a public meeting venue is the place to talk about staff, right? If there's an issue, come see me offline, we'll talk about it then. I think we should respect each other. The staff should respect what the Board of Selectment have to do, and the staff and the Board of Selectmen should respect the staff, right? There'll be tensions, disagreements, misunderstandings, and all those good things. But my first request will always be, ask the question before there's an accusation, right? Because there's always two sides to every story. So I will defend the staff. I will not, never come here and throw the staff under the bus. It's not my way.
Great. Thank you so much. So if you could just take a second and give us an example of a complex problem or conflict that you've successfully resolved in a prior role? And I'd specifically like to understand your problem-solving methods and how you negotiate to, to get the best resolution.
Yeah, complex, well, there's, well, it's not complex anymore. Can you say that again, please?
Yeah, no, just more like-
Because there's a bunch, you know?
Yeah, I probably overcomp-
I mean, the most complex, I think the most complex thing you do is a budget. But the one that has the most moving parts is probably a collective bargaining agreement, right? When you're going into, in, in Weathersfield, we had seven units on the town side, another half dozen, four or five on the school side. And, you know, all those moved at once, and then you have, so that process, that whole, and in Sturbridge, we had two or three, and in Spencer, we have three. So that process, and you never want to be in a position to have to make a decision. So when I work through something like a complex issue, whether it be a collective bargaining agreement, a budget, a zoning issue, a personnel where you have to take corrective action, it's always best to stop and think, right? I had an engineering, the engineer we used in Kansas, very smart guy, worked for the town for a long time. And I kind of take this away from him. Every time we talked about an issue, he'd say, stop, let us get some survey work on that. Which to him meant, stop and think about this for a minute before we do anything, right? Just take a breath, take a step back, let us take a look at this and see what really is going on here or what we really want to do. And with collective bargaining, I don't mind if we meet a hundred times. Because sometimes you make progress, sometimes you don't, sometimes you have to think about it, sometimes you hear something different. But there's a ton of complex problems. Whether, whether they be environmental remediation, where you have to do X, Y, Z and go through the process, or hire the LSP or all those other things. There's so many complex things. But it all comes down to trying not to be surprised about the complexity, understanding the nature of the issue, and taking the time to get it right and not underthink or overthink it.
A delicate balance.
It's all a deli, this is all about balance. Everything we do is all about balance.
Thank you. This is a very different topic. But my question is, what do you think is a town or any town's responsibility in addressing climate change?
I think you should do the best you can with what you have, right? There are tools out there. Some towns use solar panels for different things, you could have electric charging stations. You should be conscious of how you're impacting the environment, particularly when you're doing infrastructure projects. Can you improve the things? You know, we're paving, we have a project in Spencer that's, you know, in any other state, it'd be called a county road, but it's a big, long road in town, and we have a TIP project, there's state funds to do it. You know, we're actually improving the drainage and the water quality that'll come off the road because we're putting in drainage and catch basins and all those other things. You should take the opportunity, when you have an opportunity, to make improvements. You know, little things go a long way. You should have an understanding of what the tools are in the toolbox. Climate change or resiliency, understanding where your weaknesses are, that mo, what is it called? The Municipal Vulnerability Program, MVP Program? Has a whole piece of that. And in, and in Kansas, we were using it as, and not for climate change, but, you know, tornadoes, those kind of things, you know? What's your vulnerability? And here, you'd have to identify what's your vulnerability. Are you prone to flooding? Will those floods get worse? Storms are getting worse. When you look at your new town hall and, or your town hall renovation and your fire station, do you need to include hardened areas in case there are more tornadoes in the, in the area, right? Do you need to include different foundation work because it may flood? Those are the, those resiliency things you need to think about. But in terms of overall climate change, you should use tools that allow you to accomplish the mission first, right? Mission first, you know, putting a battery-operated dump, you know, plow out at 2:00 AM, maybe someday, but today, probably, you know, you run out of battery power come 2:00 AM and it's still snowing, maybe not the most effective tool. But a hybrid police car, probably a good tool, right? We were using those in Spencer. So you take advantage of the opportunities that you have to achieve your mission, but make an impact. Little impacts over time grow into big impacts.
Thank you.
Okay, Lisa.
Lately, I've been noticing that we have projects that are voted on at a town meeting, and they change as the project moves forward. Sometimes a substantial change occurs. And from the presentation and the discussion to the actual completion. And a lot of questions are asked at that stage. And of course, that's the ultimate in terms of, you know, getting the participants at town meeting to vote for the item that you want to do. How do you handle that? Do you, do you feel that if it's a large enough, or what makes it a large enough change to take it back to town meeting? Or do you have some way of letting the, the population who voted for a certain thing to understand that they're not gonna get what they had anticipated with their vote?
Great question. I've always believed that if you're fortunate enough to get the community to award you dollars to do a project, if you do it well and you, and you meet expectations, they're more likely to give you money the next time you ask, right? So you get it right, and you do it right, and then people trust you to do it again. So when looking at your particular scenario, I would ask myself, is this what the expectation was? Are we consistent with what the warrant article or the goals of the community were? And are we communicating, is it necessary, is that change necessary? Or can we keep with the original goals? And all of this should be part of a conversation with the Board of Selectmen, right? You're going to approve the contracts. If we have a contract, you're gonna approve whatever it is we're doing. At the end of the day, you should be aware of what the intent was and where the trajectory is now. And I think that's a conversation between the staff and the board saying, hey, maybe this needs to go back to town meeting because we're kind of off the reservation here, right? We're kind of off the track of what our expectations were. And maybe it's necessary because the funding system changed or prices went up or whatever it was. But I think that needs to be out in the open so people understand this is what we asked for. You got eighty-five percent of it, or a hundred and five, or whatever it was, we still accomplished the goals, or we didn't, but it still should be communicated. And the board should decide, hey, maybe that's, we need to timeout and go back to the community and say, this needs to change. It can't be accomplished under the original set of assumptions.
Right, so that you would, once you would hear from perhaps the, the department that was doing whatever the job was, they realized that when their RFP went out and it wasn't the same, that would be the time they would come to you and then say, listen, you know, it's changed a bit. What do you want to do? You would then come to us, we discuss it, and then move forward, or?
If, if, if this was a project that the Board of Selectmen or the town meeting agreed on and gave money for, if the, if the RFP came back and it was over budget by a bunch of money or it couldn't be accomplished, I would hope that if we put out, put out an RFP for a project, we would know whether or not we could do it. Forget the money side, right? From a, just an accomplishment of the goal perspective, can, can this be done? So I'd hope we know that upfront. But if we get the RFP back and it's totally different, whatever, I think that's a conversation with the group about, hey, we, we tried to do this, this is what we got for a response, it doesn't seem to fit with the intent, what do you want to do, right? And that's a conversation between me and the department head. And then we would say, well, can we go back out and see if we can try again? Is that gonna do us any good? Or what's, what's the nature of the reason why it's not aligning with, aligning with the original goals? And then go back to say, you know, we tried, but this is, this is kind of what's going on in the marketplace and this is what can't, can or can't happen. But it needs to be out in the open.
Okay, and that's, that's on the financial side. Before the RFP is written, the RFP is changed from what was agreed to at town meeting. Not the financial side of it, but what actually was going to happen.
I hope not. It shouldn't, right? We, the, it shouldn't, right? We should bring to you what the community's expectations were. Because when the RFP comes back and, and there's a recommendation for an award, we should be able to say, if you agree to this contract, these are the outcomes you're gonna get, right?
Okay, no, you answer my question.
Okay, that's kind of, okay, good, thank you.
Thank you. So it was mentioned earlier, and it is accurate that Northborough has been without a full-time town administrator for about eight months, and that's just part of the process. The sky has not fallen. Everything continues to operate very smoothly, and that's due to the staff that we have, which is a really, really impressive, great group of people. What, but we also have some vacancies. What tools have you used in the past, or do you expect to use here, to attract and retain quality talent?
In today's marketplace for municipal employees, it's, it's a very shallow market. So you're challenged in that there's movement. There are, there are substantial sums of money being increased for certain skilled-type positions, and you need to be aware of that. So it's a challenge to find qualified people. And to keep qualified people, I've found that if you support them, you're fair with them, you allow them to do their jobs under supervision, right? Have clear expectations, and be consistent, most people enjoy coming to work, right? And then when there's opportunities, you know, I don't know when the last time you did a salary study or any of those kind of things, but it's, it's something you should do periodically to make sure you're still in the marketplace. Those are the things you need to do. When you recruit employees, I think you need to have the same message. This is a good place to work, you're allowed to do your job, we have clear expectations. You're working, you're working amongst professionals that are, that are just as motivated towards a goal as you are. And we're gonna allow you to be a good employee, right? So you send that message. And if you're known to be a good employer, people will, people who want to be good employees will gravitate to those organizations, right? In your recruiting ad, I think the phrase was, allowing the employees to do their jobs while providing accountability, right? In your recruiting ad, I think the phrase was allowing the employees to do their jobs while providing accountability, right? And again, that's, that's a tremendous balance, right? We all make mistakes and the reason we make mistakes is because we're doers. People at the local level of government are doers. And I expect people to make mistakes. It's how we address those. If someone comes to me, well, I messed it up. I messed up the RFP and instead of getting twenty-something, we're going to get two hundred. I'm like, whatever. Okay, do it again, right? You know, we had an issue in, in a town where we forgot to post the bid on kombis, right, for a paving project. Okay, it happened. So redo it, no big deal. The second bid actually came in cheaper. So, you know, it worked out at the end of the day, right? But the employee knew it wasn't, the earth didn't come to an end, right? So you have to be positive and all those good things. I think right now, in the economic environment we're in for municipal employees, it's a very, like I said, a very shallow pool. It's a very competitive pool and Northborough needs to be aware of that, as does Spencer, as does Strobridge and as does everybody else.
Thank you. Question?
I don't actually have a second, a third question ready and I can't think of anything right now.
Oh, no. I hope that's good. I hope that's positive.
Well, no, one popped into my head and then it went out right while you said my name, so it's okay. Someone else will probably ask it. It wasn't that hard a question.
Okay. Laura?
Thank you. So one of the, one of the demographics in our town is our fixed income friends and our seniors are one of the most active and thriving parts of our community. Our senior center is full of awesome programming. Something that's really important to me, and I don't even know how to ask this question, is how do we keep the town affordable for people who are on fixed incomes that they continue to enjoy the community and really to help bolster that, you know, their enrichment?
That's a great question and it's one that every community struggles with. We just had our rate hearing the other, or our tax, tax rate hearing the other night. And what's interesting is to me, the town's really, the, the housing values are going up at such a dramatic rate. It's suppressing the tax rate. You know, if you're sticking to your two and a half percent levy and all those good things. You know, our tax rate dropped from over twelve to, to eleven forty-four, right? Because our housing values went up six percent and the tax, and the property taxes went up, even though the tax rate went down, I, I believe substantially. So how did, how was, how does a town really address that, right? What do you do about that? You know, you have that, you have the senior work off program and some of those other things, but that gets back into how do we provide housing for people who can't afford to be in their houses anymore, right? Are there opportunities to create more senior housing and can we work with the Housing Authority and other partners in that field to create that housing? And the town has nothing to do with those values. We didn't, you know, it's good your house went up, right? If you want to sell it, but if you want to live in it, it's not very good, right? So all those things become a challenge. I think you do the best you can. I think you under, you try to understand the vulnerabilities in the community and address those the best you can when it comes to budgets. Right? And also look at services. How, can you, how many days a week is fuel assistance in town? How many days a week are you, is a food bank available, right? Those kind of things. And do you have people on the fringe that really need those services consistently? And how do you get them into a program with a, with a social worker or a, you know, as a client relationship with those people that are cared for, right?
Thank you. I remembered my question. Can I go? Sorry, I just, I wrote them down and then I just kind of left my prepared questions at home because I didn't, I didn't want to be too canned. So I thought it would be better if I did it off the cuff. That didn't work out for one little second, but it's, I'm back, I'm back. So we have a big issue in Northborough regarding traffic because we have a, a shiny new Amazon warehouse.
Yes.
And on that same street, we have FedEx and then we have another street in town that has a lot of warehouse and industrial. We have a couple of sections in town that are industrial. And we have found that, um, not only is it more car traffic because people are going to work, which, great, good, more, more people with jobs and, and, and the taxes from these buildings are, are very helpful to the town, but the truck traffic, the eighteen wheelers, which are literally the size of buildings with wheels going forty, forty-five miles an hour down our streets, where we also have, you know, vulnerable drivers, one of our, one of the streets in town where the, there are a lot of warehouses is also where our high school is. And a lot of kids in Southborough, it's a regional high school, which I'm sure you did all this homework and you know this. Northborough, Southborough, generally the Southborough kids have to come out the driveway on this brizzy, busy street and take a left to get to Southborough. That's really the best way for them to go. So have you had to deal with traffic and safety issues in any of the towns where you've been? What kind of wisdom could you bring to Northborough in that area? It's a really big deal here.
All things like that can be solved with obscene amounts of money.
I don't think we have.
See, well, there you go. There you go. Every town deals with traffic, particularly if you're on a main route like you are and you've had those tremendous opportunities, which are opportunities, but they also come with some spinoff effects that... So, and this is maybe a cop-out answer, but you got to work the problem. Where's the most congestion? Where's the biggest safety issue? Where, how do you solve that? And then you move on to the next one. And it's not going to happen overnight. And that's the best you can do, whether you change signals, you, you, you develop some other route somehow that's just for truck traffic. I mean, these are big, these are big issues, right?
I mean, some of the issues would require dealing with other towns.
Right.
So...
So you want to send the traffic to another town?
There are other routes that are parallel.
Right, so that's what I'm saying.
That happen to go through other towns, so you would have to get their permission and that kind of thing.
Well, I think that it's a regional issue.
Yes.
It's a regional issue.
Exactly.
Any traffic issue is a regional issue. And you have to work within the region to solve those issues, whether it be bypasses or different routes or whatever it is. There's no right answer. There's no immediate answer. There's just working the problem the best you can. And finding those maybe immediate safety things you can do that aren't easy, but have a little bit of an impact to solve some problems as you work on the bigger problem. And it has to be a problem you're willing to focus on, provide resources to and make it a priority. Because something like that is big, is a generational type project.
My turn? Okay, so I'm not, I'm not sure that you're, if you're aware that we have a beautiful historic mansion in town that the town used to purchase.
I am. I am. And I can't wait to see it. I'm an undergrad in history if I didn't, if you didn't know.
So my question is, do you have any opinions about the value of historic properties and whether or not it, what historic properties do add or detract from a, from a town development?
Now, as a historian, everything's important. As a local government manager, just because something's old doesn't make it historic, right? So there's a balance there. But the house you're speaking of, the, the Wesson House?
Yes.
I think would probably add value to the community in some form or fashion. We had a similar house in Weathersfield. It was the, where the DMV is in Weathersfield, it used to be the state prison and there was the warden's house on the same, on the same grounds. And the town owns the warden's house or what used to be the warden's house. And they can, used it for functions and for gatherings and rented out and all those good things. They have a caretaker that lives there. And on the lawn around the house, they developed the Weathersfield Farmers Market and they have those Thursday afternoons through the summer and the fall. Just depends on what your vision is, right? I think it's an important artifact, maybe be an attraction, maybe be an asset, but that's very much a conversation amongst the community and what you want to do, right? But there are models all over about these kind of properties, some good, some bad. I think you just have to have a community conversation about, is it important to you as a community and what, can it be used for and, and who's going to do it, right? Do you have the capacity to take on something like that and make it effective?
Thank you.
Lisa?
Well, you did it again. You started to answer a question I'd already put together.
Just trying to keep one step ahead. Just trying to keep one step ahead.
And one can appreciate that. So, but it's not as, as good as the last water fire one. It's talking about the select board vision.
Yes.
Which is, I'm assuming, a very important aspect of your job, to be able to have that vision and to be able to have it detailed.
Right.
So that makes your job even that much more efficient. So with that, with the vision that's, that's given, I mean, I've, I've noticed many towns have been doing it for many years. Northborough has not been one of those towns, but we're working on it right now. Do you feel that once the vision is, is put together, that, that, what do you feel? It would seem to me to be important to have all the, all of the departments and such working in that same direction. So if, if we've decided that our vision is to make the mansion the hottest place in town and bringing in entertainment and just balls and, and bringing Bostonians out here just to play.
Absolutely.
I think it's a great idea myself and we're going to, you know, with that, the fire and the water, it'll be great. So with that in mind, if you, if, if we have decided that this is what we want to do and some of the departments do not agree to that, how, how does that break down? How does, how does our vision stop? Or, you know, we have to put the glasses on to see further down and you're in the middle being, oh, well, here, let me adjust your glasses because clearly there's, there's something that's going on here and we need to either clean the thumbprint off and so that we can all move in the same direction. So I answered my own question.
I don't know. What's the question?
Well, the question is, if this...
Because I think I know what the question is.
If it's going to happen, if you see that it's, that it's going to happen, how are you going to bring that, bring that vision back, taking the thumbprint off the glass, actually?
Okay. I, I firmly believe the Board of Selectmen needs to have a vision and a work plan and that work plan should be developed with the staff. So for instance, you say, I want the town of Northborough to be able to put a person on the moon in ten years. And you go to the staff, how do we do that, right? We want the Wesson House to be a place for X, Y, Z. Staff, how do we do that, right? You provide the vision, we provide how to, right? That's how that's supposed to work, right? And, and maybe there's some resistance because we've not done that before, right? But I think if you engage the staff in what's the best way to accomplish the things you're going to ask them to accomplish, I think that helps and that's what I do. I don't go to the police department, say eliminate crime and, you know, or do this to eliminate crime. I just say eliminate crime. You know, whatever. But you know what I'm saying? You have to incorporate the people that are going to do it into your vision so everybody understands what can be done or what it, what's it going to take to do those things? Because if it's a new vision, if it's something we've not done before, unless we're getting new resources and new people to do it, some of the things we did yesterday aren't going to be as important as the things you want us to do tomorrow. And you have to understand that because there's only so many hours in the day and so many dollars in the bank. We're not going to be able to do ten new things and twenty old things at the same time. There has to be a give and take and a staged kind of vision of what you want. It has to be doable, you know, you have to be able to accomplish it in the first place. You have to understand the resources it's going to take to do that. And the best thing for me is to have a work plan because then if I don't have a work plan, I go off on my own and, you know, that's just, that's just bad.
Can I ask a follow-up question to that?
Absolutely.
So have you, have you done vision, visions with boards and staff and set goals? Could you just like give us a little bit of detail about how you did that? Everybody in the room together? How does that, how did you make it work?
In, in Andover, we did. We had everybody in the room. And everybody sat down, the department heads with the, with the city council and says, where are we? What do we want to do? And they all talked and we got it done and we made a plan and we made a list and we did stuff. Weathersfield, annually, there was a retreat, we called it a retreat, but it was part of the budget process. Where are we today? Where are we tomorrow? What do we want to accomplish? Those kind of things. You can have it facilitated. I'm sure you can find a facilitator that helps you engage on some of these things. Or you can do it amongst yourself. I think it's very positive. I think the Board of Selectmen should visit every town facility every year just to see the breadth of what you're really responsible for, because it's not just this building. It's not just the people in this building. You have, you're the only people in the world tasked with doing and being responsible for what you're responsible for. And I hope you understand that and take that the way it's meant to be. You're the only ones in the world responsible for what you're responsible for, right? And you should be aware of what kind of shape the police department's in, what kind of shape, what water plant it looks like. So when the water superintendent or whoever it is comes to say, you and said, the filtration tank has a hole in it, you mentally, oh, that's the filtration, right? You should be aware of all these things. It's part of the community and it's part of your responsibility. So all those things should come together into commu, into conversations with your staff about what you want to accomplish and reciprocally, what the staff need to accomplish to make their jobs, to get it done, what they need to get done. It's a very much a two-way street.
Thanks. That was a good follow-up. We are running low on time.
Okay.
So I'm going to turn things around and ask you to ask us anything that you would like to know about Northborough or the process as a whole.
Well, I think the one question that I would ask is why do each of you want to be on the Board of Selectmen?
Is it a two-part question?
You can make it as many parts as you want, but it's just one of those things. Why are you here?
I'll go first. It's to make the town better. And I know that that sounds so trite, but it's totally how I feel.
Okay. That's a good answer.
Well, I've been doing this for a long time, even though I haven't been sitting in this chair. And many will attest to that. I saw things that I was shocked and I saw more things that made me, oh! And I felt, you know what? I am going to be able to use my experience and years and to hopefully bring a better, a better offer to what it, our environment that we live in is. And doing so by asking, I, I love communication. I love to talk to the, the citizens. I like to listen to what they want. I'm not one that will say, this is my idea. I'd rather get a cross-section of ideas. And I think I've been known to do that and I think that we're ready. We're going to have a lot of changes. I think we're ready to have a brand-new shiny vision and, and something that will benefit everyone.
I think for me, there's so many different reasons. I grew up here. I was really excited to run for office because I, I love being here. I want the town to be a place that people continue to love. I want the downtown to be a place that people enjoy being together in. I want it to be beautiful. I want the residents to feel comfortable with all the amenities that we have. I love our trails. And I just, I love the people. So anything that we can do to help make the town a better place for them to live, work and, you know, have fun, I want to be a part of that.
Nice. You don't have to answer.
Um, I ran with, with a few projects in mind and traffic and safety was one of, probably the biggest one, so.
Good.
I can't believe I forgot that question.
Number of people have called me a local government nerd, which is accurate. I, I served on the Board of Selectmen in another town in Massachusetts a number of years ago and moved to Northborough at some point and I thought my time in local government was done because I didn't know anyone. I was wrong because I love it. And I, I really love the town of Northborough for all sorts of reasons. The great people, the great school system and, and all, all of the exciting things that, that we have and a lot of exciting things that, that we can do that we're not, we're not there yet, but I can see within grasp.
Outstanding. Well, thank you. Thank you for those answers.
Thank you very, thank you very much for joining us to see.
Nice to meet you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So we're going to take a five-minute recess?
Five minutes.
For the town of Billrica, you know, we work really hard to create a responsible budget that doesn't, you know, crush the taxpayers every year. And while I was the assistant town manager, for two years I served as the personnel director. So I handled all the hiring, firing, you know, discipline, training, all the good stuff and all the bad stuff that sort of comes with it. And then, previous to that, I was the director of administrative services. And a lot of the same job duties. Previous to that, I was the budget analyst and management analyst for the town of Billrica. And so there I started the social media accounts for the town. We have, you know, close to 11,000 followers on Facebook, Nextdoor account, email newsletter. I would print out the email newsletter and put it everywhere in town. Previous to that, I was the executive assistant to town manager in the town of Littleton. There I learned sort of the nuts and bolts of how, you know, a town manager's office works, the agenda, worked with the board a lot. Previous to that, I was chief of staff to a city councillor in Boston, worked on a political campaign for a couple mayors. And yes, one thing that, you know, you wouldn't see in my resume, it's just I became a dad about a year ago. And so, very proud dad. Takes a lot of work, too, so. So I don't really have, you know, I have, you know, I work, I love municipal government and I love being a dad. And really, there's no other hobbies in between, so.
Thank you very much. Kristen?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
That's lovely. So this position came up in spring. Can you tell me why you didn't apply then?
Yeah, so at that time, I guess I really wasn't looking for a job. And so I have a great job in the town of Billrica. I really enjoy my job. But so about a year ago, I applied for a job in the town of Boxborough and I didn't end up getting it. My son was born five days before I had the interview. So, you know, I wasn't, I wasn't on my A game. And so I spent that year thinking about, you know, introspectively, what I do good, what I do bad, you know, what I can do to take myself to the next level and be a town manager. So for a year, I thought about everything that I did good, did bad. You know, I put my town manager hat on every time I did something, every time I wrote something, every time I said something. And I thought about being a town manager. And then I was like, I am definitely, like, I thought I was ready before and I was ready. And I'm like, I'm definitely ready now. And so I saw this Northborough job and I've seen all sorts of other jobs come up. And I didn't want to go to a job where I was just going to sit in the chair and collect a paycheck and do nothing. I wanted to go to a place where I was going to be able to work and get something done and do stuff and, you know, accomplish things. And Northborough's that type of place.
We've got a lot going on.
Exactly. And I want a lot going on. I don't want to just sit around and do nothing. So that's why when I saw Northborough pop up the second time, I was like, that's a place I want to be. And so I applied and.
So the timing worked out this time?
Yeah, the timing was better. And so, and the funny thing is, is that a lot of the things that I had been working on had sort of come to a completion. So there was sort of like, not like a finish line, but it was one of those things where I had sort of, you know, things that I had been working on for a long time were done, they were completed. And I could be like, okay, it's time to pass this off to somebody else, so.
And just sort of a second piece of that question is, like as you were saying, work in town government, assistant town manager, sounds like because Billrica's so big and busy, you have a lot to do. And it's like that here, too. So what pieces of the job do you find the most interesting? What parts of it do you think are your strengths? And what parts do you think you're, you're still learning and growing?
Yeah, so I mean, I'll just hit on the weaknesses right away. And my weakness is I've, I've obviously never been a town manager. And so I'm sure, you know, you guys have noticed that, looking at my resume, that I just haven't done it. So I mean, that's a very evident weakness. But I think without a doubt, I am ready to sort of take that jump and do that job. I know that if you ask the town manager, he'd say, I'm 100% ready. If you ask the chair of the board of selectmen, he would say, I'm 100% ready. And if you ask the staff, they would say, I'm a leader, I've earned their respect, and, you know, I could easily do that job. And so, things that I love about municipal government, I love everything to do with municipal government. And I love the new challenge that sort of comes up kind of every day in town. And so like, just today, for example, one of the selectmen called me and he was like, hey, can we put up a 25 mile per hour speed limit sign in the town of Billrica? And I was like, I think that you can, but like, let me do a little digging and figure out, can we actually do that? Because I knew that we did not opt into the whole thickly settled district thing. We only did certain streets. And so the town was 30 miles per hour. So I had to figure out, you know, is it a vote of them? Is it, can it be an administrative action? So, you know, I love the new stuff that pops up every single solitary day and.
So did you find all the information about the safety zone?
Yep, got it all, got it all to him.
We did that a couple of years.
Yeah, and it's funny, right? Because when I asked the police chief and I was talking to the town engineer about it, I was like, we probably should not just do this one street. We should have a discussion about the entire town. And so on Friday, we're going to have a discussion, you know, should we go 25 miles per hour to the, all the thickly settled districts? So it's like, things like that, you know, when you start to peel back the layers of the onion or pull the thread on the sweater, you know, you kind of find a couple of other problems and you're like, maybe we should tackle this whole entire thing. And then it's a whole nother sort of project that I can move along to the finish line. So just everything that comes with it is enjoyable to me.
Fun. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. I appreciate your passion. Northborough has some really big budget items coming up. They include elementary school projects, town hall projects, fire station projects. You know, there's, it's a pretty long list. And I'd like to understand how you'll use your experience with budget development to just walk us through how the budgetary planning will work. You know, how would you come about that in Northborough, given the big projects that we have in our future?
Yeah, so we just went through the same sort of thing in the town of Billrica. We put together a capital facilities committee. So in the town of Billrica, there was, everybody wanted to do all of these sort of different things. Some people wanted to build the DPW, some people wanted to build a senior center, some people wanted to build a rec center, some people wanted affordable housing, fire stations, you know, historical renovations. There was this long list of things that they, everybody wanted to do. And you can't do them all at once because you can't crush the taxpayer. And you can't, you know, your budget can't withstand doing all of that stuff. And you can't take on all that debt at one time. So we had to figure out the best way to sort of approach it. So we got the chairs from all of the, like, major committees in town. And we put them all in this committee called the capital facilities committee. And then what we did is we said, okay, you guys have to tier your sort of expectations and priorities and tell us what is the first thing you want, what is the second thing you want, what is the third thing you want? And so we went through this process. And we figured out, okay, this is tier one, tier two, tier three, all the way down to the very last thing that sort of was on their mind. And we said, okay, thank you for the tiers, let us go back and sort of do our work. And so what we did is we created a debt stabilization plan. So we created a way to fund all of these projects. And so we figured out, okay, if you put this project here, and then some debt's going to fall off, and then you put this project here, this project doesn't cost as much, so we can line these two projects up at the same exact time, you know, that'll be okay. And so we went out, you know, 10, 15 years, and we got sort of all their projects on the priority list. And the way that we were doing it is we have a pretty healthy debt stabilization fund right now of $20 million. And so what we did is that we started out in sort of like a stepped approach, is that at year one, anything, any debt service over $10 million, so anything over $10 million. So if the debt service was $12 million, we would take $2 million from the debt stabilization account and pay it down, that $2 million, so it wouldn't crush the taxpayer. And so we did that all the way out to be able to pay for all of those projects. And anytime it was under, so like, then the next year would be 11. And then anytime it was under that level, we would put that extra money into sort of our piggy bank to pay for those projects when it came down. So, you know, I'm a, one step ahead of you guys in Billricka of putting together those debt schedules.
Thank you.
My turn?
Yeah.
Well, first of all, congratulations on becoming a new dad.
Thank you.
Amazing. So my question is, it goes back to something that you were talking about. What, what do you think are the pros and cons of a town having a town manager versus a town administrator?
Yeah, so I've worked in both. So in Littleton, it was a town administrator. And obviously here, I mean, obviously in the town of Billricka, it's a town manager, former government. And so town manager, former government is interesting because everything sort of reports to you and you are the driver of the bus and everything kind of goes through you. And town administrator, it's a little bit different. You're more of a facilitator. You're more making sure that everything, you, you got to make sure everybody's sort of rowing in the same direction. You know, you guys set the policy and you want everybody to row in that same direction and that same boat. And it's a little bit tougher in a town administrator because the police chief doesn't answer to you, the fire chief doesn't answer to you, the veteran service director doesn't answer to you. And, you know, there's all sorts of other boards and committees out there that don't answer to you. But so you have to, you know, be a leader and, you know, help everybody sort of row in that same direction that the select board's policy that they set. And you have to be, you know, collaborative. You have to work together. You have to hear all the voices in town. And you got to bring everybody together and move things forward, so. Town administrator, I definitely think is tougher, but, you know, everything's a challenge and you can make it all work.
Thank you.
Lisa.
Hello again.
Hi.
Okay, I have a three-part question.
Sure.
It's about economic development. Northborough has a history and unique identity, which I'm sure you know all. What's your strategy for economic development and attracting businesses to Northborough while preserving the town's heritage and character?
Mm-hmm.
And the second question is, if you feel that increased affordable housing is one of the methods to do this, what are the pros and cons to that? And the third part is, MBTA housing is a topic that it's also being mandated by the state. And again, what are the pros and cons to that?
Yeah, so I'll go backwards. So MBTA communities, so we're facing it in Billricka. And actually, tomorrow I set up a drive-along with, so it's going to be me, the town manager, the economic development director, the planning director, and a couple other members of town. And we're going to go around to sort of, we're going to first go to, directly to, you know, that half-mile radius that 40% of the housing has to be in. And we're going to go and we're going to take a look at sort of the zones that we think may fit and may not fit and sort of, you know, make sense and don't make sense. And we're going to go out there and kind of look at it. And it's a lot of housing to sort of jam into one place. I mean, in Billricka, it's 2,000 units. We got 15,000 units in town. So I mean, that's, that's a lot. And it's, in the place that they're asking us to put it, is already all sort of residential. And so if you put, you know, 15 units an acre in some of those places, it changes the whole sort of feel of that neighborhood in Billricka. And so, you know, me and the town manager, we've talked a lot about, you know, is this the right place to have all of this density? Do you shift it, you know, do you just do exactly what you can with that 40% and then move the rest somewhere else in town? Because you don't want to destroy neighborhoods and you don't want to destroy sort of what's already there. And so I don't know exactly what, you know, how, where your MBTA communities has to be. But you have to sort of, like you said, protect the character of the town, protect the neighborhoods and sort of, you know, mesh it and blend it together with what's there. And then so you were talking about affordable housing. And so affordable housing is a hot topic in every community. And, you know, I was on Redfin today. And if you just look at housing, it's insane, the prices. And so you have to produce more housing, but you have to produce it in a way that, like you said, it doesn't sort of, you know, really affect the character of town. And there's places to put housing that make sense and there's places to not put housing that, there's places that you wouldn't put housing that don't make any sense. So, you know, it's a conversation and a collaboration between the select board to hear what you guys, what is important to you, what's important to the planning board. And you have to go out and you got to talk to the residents, too. And you have to understand, you know, what they think and what they feel and, you know, what's important to them. And so we do a lot on social media in the town of Billricka, asking people, you know, their thoughts, what they think about this. We did a community forum on MBTA communities, sent a letter to all the neighbors trying to figure out, you know, what people thought of sort of that. And then I forget the first part of the question because I went backwards, so.
What's your strategy for economic development?
Yeah, and so the strategy, right, is you pick up the phone and you start calling people. And so in what I do all the time, so like today, right, I saw in the Boston Globe that Brookline passed their, you know, their MBTA communities, actually. And I called over and I talked to the director of planning and community development. We had a long conversation about economic development and what she thought was good, what businesses were coming over there, what businesses that she might thought would fit in Billricka. So I spend a lot of time doing that. And if there's a business that I like to go to, like, I like Press Cafe, so I don't know if you've ever been there. And so I called Press Cafe and I was like, hey, what would it take for you guys to come to Billricka? And, you know, he was like, you know, I'm looking for this many cars to go by every day. This would be a good spot, you know, this square footage, all of this kind of stuff. And I was like, oh, you know, there's nothing really that fits that kind of mold. But I hope that you'll find a place sort of, you know, near me, that at least I can go to Press Cafe. And I've done that in a zillion, with a zillion other places. I've called the corporate office of like Longhorn Steakhouse because people always say, we want a Longhorn Steakhouse, or they want a Trader Joe's. And, you know, it's really interesting to talk to these places. And they say, you know, this is what we're looking for. And like, there's sometimes places that you can, you know, push them to and tell them to go. And then otherwise, you got to zone, you have to make it, you know, not a business-friendly community, but you have to zone the area to make it a place that a business will survive and a business will thrive and a business can go to. And I don't know that because I don't own a business. But you know what I do is I go and I call the people who do own small businesses, who own big businesses, and I figure out what they want to see. And then, you know, you got to create that for them. And, you know, if you create it, they'll come, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. So Northborough has been without a full-time town administrator for about eight months.
Yeah.
It's part of the process. And we're hoping to resolve that pretty soon, obviously. But the sky hasn't fallen.
Yeah.
And I think that's due to some excellent staff that we have here that are still working 110 miles an hour, getting things done and keeping things going. We also have some vacancies that have built up that we need to get resolved pretty soon. How have you done things to attract and retain quality talent?
Yeah, so when I was, when, when I was serving as the personnel director in the town of Billricka, we had a rash of retirements sort of right around the same time. We had, you know, 11 open department head or like middle manager positions. And so what we did is we went out and we found, you know, we reloaded, we posted all these jobs and we rebuilt the entire sort of town. And so what we did is, you know, there's a lot of different things that you can do, but we made Billricka an attractive place to work. And so what we did is, you know, we put out, you know, job postings. And so when I moved to assistant town manager, one of the interesting things was that director of administrative services job that had been open twice. And so both people who had moved into, you know, the assistant town manager job, both people who had taken a director of administrative job, a services job, eventually went on to be assistant town managers. And so that was attractive to people when they saw that in the job posting. And so you have to be creative with the job postings to sort of attract people to the jobs and get them to come in. And then an interesting thing about Billricka is the, the town manager's been there for 14 years. There's stability in the community. And he's very well-respected and people know that if they come here, they can get to learn from him. You know, he'll, won't micromanage him, then he'll let them sort of do, you know, do their job. And so the way to retain talent is you have to figure out sort of what makes them tick and build them up, right? So I'm sure in this building, there's somebody who, you know, can be assistant town manager. And you have to find that person, you have to sort of cultivate them and motivate them and train them and make sure that, you know, you push them in the right direction and you include them in all sorts of things to make them ready to become assistant town manager. And I'm sure there's clerical staff who's ready to become a department head. You have to do that same thing. And you have to train them and mold them and involve them and include them in things that will help push them forward. And so we've spent a lot of time doing that in the town of Billricka. And, you know, our treasurer collector, she, you know, was the clerk in that office, moved up to tax collector. Now she's treasurer collector. And we've had other people throughout the building who have, you know, we, we identified and we knew that they were good employees and we motivated them, we trained them, and we sort of moved them up through the ranks. So, you know, in every, every place, there's somebody who wants to be a town manager. There's somebody who wants to be assistant town manager, wants to be a department head. They just want to do their job better. And you have to figure out who those people are and mold them, train them, and mentor them and, you know, do exactly what has been done to me for, you know, the past seven years. You know, I've had a great mentor, so I want to carry that on.
Thank you very much. Kristen?
So this is a little bit of a similar sort of area of questioning about your management style.
Yeah.
So you said you did a lot of HR stuff at, like, previously in your job. So that's great because that's really helpful information to know. But we have, so we have a lot of, like Mitch said, a lot of really qualified department heads and, and staff who have been here a long time and really know how to do what they do. So I assume micromanaging isn't probably your style. I can kind of get that vibe from you, which is great. But we also just, okay, so there's, there's everything from support. Like, the, my favorite go-to example is the, the head of the library.
Yeah.
She is fantastic. Everybody is a fan of hers. And really what she does, she has her own building, she has her own, you know, kind of universe over there. But she needs the support of town hall. She needs her town administrators' support because she does run into issues sometimes. Libraries these days, people are coming and protesting at them and, you know, trying to take away books and banning. And it's, it's really a, a new world for libraries. So how, you know, how do you show support for someone like that? As well as at this, on the same day, you have a department head coming to you saying, what do you think about department heads working one day a week from home? That's what they're doing in Westborough.
Yeah.
So how do you?
Yeah, so I mean, right, it's an interesting question. And so I'm not a micromanager. I always say, I joke around all the time, that if I wanted to be the DPW director, I would have applied for that job. So, you know, that's not the job that I want. I want to be, you know, a town administrator. And so the best way to sort of be successful with me, and so this is what I've learned from, you know, the town manager that I work under, is, you know, we have this, we have an open-door policy and it is a real, actual, open-door policy. And so what hap, the department heads and the staff know that if you want to be successful, the best way to be successful is to pop up a couple times a week or every day and chit-chat with us and talk with us and get to know us. And you know what, you don't always have to give a report every single solitary time you come up. Just stand at the counter and maybe, you know, tell us about, you know, your son or your daughter's soccer game and how they won the game. But what that leads to is that the DPW director will come up and he'll be chatting with us about, you know, paving work that he's doing. And then the fire chief will also pop up. And he'll be like, hey, you know, Fred, I saw you paving over here on this road. You know, there's water lines from 1978 that are broken. You know, you should think about taking a look at those while you're over there. And so you have like a lot of, like, mini department head meetings that sort of happen all the time by actually having a real collaborative, open-door policy. And so I would do sort of the exact same thing. And everybody in town hall knows you can always pop up and you can always talk to us about your issues. But then on the other side, you know, we have some employees who, you know, they just don't ever come up, so we'll go see them. And so like the library director, they're off in their own separate building. So it's not like town hall, they can just take a walk up the stairs and come see us. So a lot of the times what we'll do is, like, you know, there's council on aging, for example. I go over there and I call Bingo every, you know, like, month or so, just so they see me and they put a name to my face and, you know, I'm there. And then I can talk to the council on aging director. And you get sort of a feel of what's going on in the building. And you get like a gut feeling, like this person's doing a great job. You know, the COA director might need a little bit of support in this area. You know, maybe they need a bigger facilities budget. But if you're never in the building and you're never talking to them, you, you can't understand it. So it's one of those things where you have to sort of, you know, especially in the people who have other buildings, you have to be aware of what's going on in the, you have to be seen. Like, I've gone to roll call for the police just so, you know, I can understand this is what's going on over there. This is what they're doing. So you just have to be around, you have to support your department heads, you have to support your employees and, you know, figure out what they need and work with them. Sometimes they're not going to tell you what they need and you, like, you know. The reason why I am where I am is because, you know, I got a gut feeling on some of these things. And most of the time, you know, I've been right a lot of the time. And so, you know, I'd have a gut feeling if I walked into the library and I could tell something was wrong with that employee. And you just, you ask them what's going on. And, you know, a lot of the times they want to tell you, but, so.
Okay, thanks.
Laura?
Thank you. So the, the Northborough Senior Center is one of my favorite places in town. So I'm glad that you mentioned calling Bingo for the council on aging. That's fun. But there's definitely, with a lot of the projects that we've coming, got coming up and the increased cost of living, it's definitely put some pressure on people with fixed income. So can you talk to me a little bit about what your strategies are to keep the town affordable for our senior residents?
Yeah, so when we build the budget in the town of Billricka, what we try to do is, you know, we're $30 million under proposition two and a half. You know, we have, you know, insane amount of excess level of capacity. We got free cash, we got everything. We're in a very good financial spot. But we know that we can't say yes to every single solitary budget request that, you know, comes across our desk because we understand, we don't want to crush the taxpayers. You know, I'm a taxpayer, I know what it's like. So what our, the board of selectmen, they gave us a goal. You know, keep the tax increase for the median household between $200 and $300. So that's always our goal when we're trying to build the budget, is to sort of keep it within that kind of goal. So, you know, when we do the budget process and everybody comes to us and they say, you know, I need a new employee here, I need a new employee there, I need a new building, you know, I need more facilities money, I need more supplies money. So we take in sort of all of those requests and we think about it. And we say, you know, yes, we can do this this year, that's going to have to get pushed off till next year. We'll think about this one depending on how everything shakes out with, you know, pension or health insurance. But we're very respectful and thoughtful of not crushing sort of the taxpayers and the people on fixed income. So, you know, I don't know what your goal is for the town administrator, for, you know, keeping a certain budget increase. But, you know, if you do have that goal, you know, I'd work within that sort of constraints.
Thank you.
So my question goes to something that you wrote in your, in your essay questions. And it sounds like in Billricka, you had a similar conversation that we're having now. We're working on a downtown revitalization plan. And there's the, you know, the push and push against, do we, how do you keep the town feeling quaint and small but adding additional housing? Because many people feel that adding the housing is what's going to revitalize the downtown.
Yeah.
However, my question to you is, are there other things that are instrumental in revitalizing a town other than a lot of housing? I, I mean, I'm not, I'm not giving an opinion about housing. Everyone, you know, feels that that's a given and with MBTA housing, we're there anyway. But what other things helped revitalize the downtown?
Yeah, so, like I said, I'm a junkie of municipal government. So I recently, probably like a year and a half ago, when we started having this conversation, somebody saw that we were having the conversation, they called me and they said, hey, Clancy, you should read Jeff Speck's 101 Rules for a Walkable Downtown and read his Smart Growth Manual. And so I, I picked up the book, I read it, and then I read, you know, I read his other two books. And so I took in sort of all of those things. And so something that's very important, right, is that you want to have a walkable downtown. You want to be able to park somewhere and then walk to a place. And when you're walking to a place, you want it to be, you know, beautiful, you want it to be nice. You want the streetscape to look nice, you want to have, you know, decorative lighting. You want to have sort of, you know, brick inlays in there. You want to do, you know, you want to have planters. You want it to look like an inviting downtown. You got to be able to cross the street, so you have to have, you know, safe pedestrian crossing. And so, you know, you have to, where I live in Derry, New Hampshire, you know, I thought it was an interesting program, is the town manager sets aside some of his ARPA money and he did facade improvements. And so if a business owner was willing to put up, you know, $50,000, the town would match $50,000 for facade improvements in the downtown. And I was like, that's a great idea. And it's a great idea for a place like here because, you know, a business owner who's gone through the pandemic, investing in their facade might not be the first thing. But if you're willing to match some of the money and help them out, you know, that might be a way to sort of make the downtown more inviting. And I don't know what your zoning is like, but you want to invite the right sort of businesses to the downtown. You don't want it to all be sort of nail salons and hair salons and, you know, things like that. Those are important, but, you know, you don't want to have 100 of them, you know, lining your downtown. So yeah, there's all sorts of things that you can do. But it's one of those things where, you know, you want to talk to the board, you want to talk to, you know, you want to talk to the board, you want to talk to the residents, too, and you want to hear from them. And like, so we did something interesting recently. We had sort of a community forum. And what we did is, the planning department, they, and I thought it was a great idea, they printed out all of these pictures. Because people, they have a hard time describing of, you know, what they want their downtown to look like. So they printed out like 50 pictures of like really inviting downtowns and, you know, asked people, do you like this aspect, do you like this aspect, you know, do you like this? Do you like the brick? Do you want it to be vinyl? All of these things. And, you know, it was really interesting. And then we were able to take some of that in. And then we were able to take some of that information and put it into our center revitalization project, so.
Thank you.
Lisa.
Okay, um, let's see. What do you feel a town's role is in addressing climate change?
It's an interesting question, right? And I, I didn't, haven't given a lot of thought to it until I became a dad. So the thing is, is because, you know, you're passing on sort of the next, you know, wor- generation or world to, um, you know, your kids. And so it's really hard as a municipality because you have to weigh sort of two things. So like I said, we're building a DPW and we want it to be solar ready. We want it to have geothermal. We want it to have sort of all of these things in it, but there's a huge cost to it. The cost is crazy. So you have to sort of balance out the cost versus, you know, the municipal impact versus how long it's going to take to sort of pay these things off. Um, you know, I think towns should sort of be out front on it, but, you know, not out front in a way that, you know, you're going to crush the taxpayers. Um, put things in buildings that aren't going to be paid off for thirty-five, forty years when the building's useful life might only be fifty. So, um, definitely a tough question and, you know, town should lead the way, but, you know, without crushing the taxpayer.
Well, that's, can you be a little bit more specific though? That's kind of a, like a ball of.
Yeah.
Yes and no. I mean, what could you do other than like, are there solar arrays? Are there different ways of, of getting, um, green, um, facilities in that would help to ease the burden of the cost of electricity, the cost of heating and all that sort of thing that you could, um, expand on?
Yeah. So I mean, okay, right. So in Bill Ricker, we have municipal aggregation. And so I don't know if you guys have that here.
We're, we're, we're working on it.
Yeah. Yep. So we have municipal aggregation in the town of Bill Ricker. And so I kind of pushed that process forward and that saves, um, a ton of ed- a ton of money for the taxpayers. It gives you an option for clean wind. I don't know how many people sign on to it, but, you know, certainly people do. Um, in the town of Bill Ricker, we also have solar arrays. So there was two, um, sort of areas of land. And a developer came to us and said, um, you know, can we put solar panels up in sort of this area? And so we worked out a deal with them where we would get credits, um, to be able to, you know, we wouldn't be charged for electricity. We would get credits, uh, you know, for allowing a solar, um, a solar, um, array in town. And then so another interesting idea, me and the town manager in Bill Ricker kicked around not too long ago, is zoning, right? And so if you allow solar panels on your home, you know, should you get certain variance setback? Like, you know, say if the setback is thirty feet from the property line, but you're willing to put solar panels on your house, you know, would we be willing to give you a variance in the zoning to allow, you know, setbacks to twenty? Or if you were a developer and you were willing to put in, um, solar or geothermal, would you, would we allow you to have, you know, higher density, more bonuses? And so, I mean, that's really a conversation for the board is that if that's, you know, initiative that you guys want to push through, I'd dive in, learn everything I could and push it forward. So, I mean, that's all I got for you.
So I want to talk a little bit or ask you a little bit about communications. And you, you mentioned it a little bit earlier and in your essay answers, you talked about social media presence and things like that. And that's something that, that North Borough doesn't do a lot of.
Yeah.
Right now. We've talked about it a little bit. I'd love to hear how you developed a communications plan in Bill Ricker and, um, how you might roll something like that out here.
Mm-hmm. So I will say that I've joined those North Borough Facebook groups and I've been, you know, slightly stalking in there just to see what's going on. Um, so it's been very interesting. And Mitch, you were very active on social media. I see that you go out there and you, you answer a lot of those questions that I would not answer myself. So good for you and jumping out there and transparency. Um, but so what I did when I first got to Bill Ricker, right, is, um, the town manager, he had lost a referendum petition. And, uh, he had lost because there was all sorts of misinformation out about the process and what was actually happening. And so he knew that he needed somebody sort of young in there to figure out social media for him. So he hired me. And, um, when I got there, they had an account with like four followers on it. And I said, okay, where do I start? And so what I did is I walked around and the people in town hall thought like this was the craziest idea that I was going to start posting things on social media. They thought it was an awful idea. They didn't like it. And there was resistance sort of in the beginning. And so I went around and I interviewed every single solitary department head. And I found a little bit about them, what their department did and sort of what was different, um, that their department did that sort of other departments didn't do or other towns didn't do. And then I started posting like, you know, I'd post like the building department, um, you know, they're doing X, Y, Z right now. And so like little information about each department or, you know, the library is having X, Y, Z event. The council on aging is having, you know, a men's group, you know, you should really go to it. And so, you know, I started telling everybody about it and, you know, the, the employees started to tell people about it. And the selectmen started to tell people about it. And people started to grab on to it and they started to think, wow, this is really good. And I was getting out all of this information to all the residents. So there wasn't confusion about what was going on on certain projects. And so it's one of those things where you have to start small and you have to sort of, you know, work with everybody to get by and to prove to them, um, that it's a good idea. And the most important thing is that there's no bias in what you do. You're just getting the information out there. You're just telling the facts of the story and sort of that's it. I'm not, you know, the editorial newspaper. All I'm doing is telling you, this is the facts about the fire station project. This is the facts about MBTA communities. Um, you know, sometimes I do it in a flashy way that grabs people's attention. So they share it to all of those groups. But, um, you know, you start small and you stay consistent with your message. And, you know, you never stray from, um, you know, just putting out the facts, so.
And there's also an email newsletter?
Yeah. So we have an email newsletter too. And, uh, so that has about three thousand followers. And so, um, it's, you know, my dad's probably watching and he's going to be mad that I'm going to say this. But, um, my dad, you know, he is not great with technology. And all he can do, like, he, he can make a call on his iPhone and he can text every once in a while, but that's about it. But you know what he does have? He has an email and he knows how to go on that email and he knows how to look at his email. So we started an email newsletter because we were getting nailed by the board of selectmen saying that, you know, there was a certain demographic that we weren't reaching. So we, we, and we put together an email newsletter and like it caught on like wildfire. And so there's three thousand people who, um, follow that. And then so they were still saying, there's people who, you know, don't get emails. So what we started to do was we printed them out and we put them at the library. We put them at the COA. Put them into the town clerk's office, the treasurer and collector's office and all these other different places around town. And then there's a restaurant that I really like in town. And so I print off a bunch of them. And when I go get breakfast, I toss them out there. So people will see them there too. So, um, but yeah, that's, you know, you just got to be consistent. We post every single solitary day, a new piece of information, something else. And so, you know, if you just keep constantly putting the information out there, people realize that that's the source for information.
Thank you. Christian?
Okay, uh, that's really interesting. So what social, um, what socia's are you on? Like when you first started going around doing your interviews and stuff, were you on, um, Facebook or?
So we're on Facebook. We have a X or Twitter. Not really, it's not heavily used in town. So we've sort of, we post on there because there's a certain demographic of like two thousand people who do follow it. So we always make sure we post it there anyways. Facebook's huge, eleven thousand followers. Nextdoor, I don't know if you guys have that, but we have eleven thousand followers on Nextdoor. Um, we thought about making a TikTok. I did one video on TikTok and it was a voiceover. And it was a lot of work, but I have it figured out, but there wasn't sort of the demographic in town to do, to do a TikTok, right? So it was like, all right, this is like a huge amount of work for like no really bang for my buck. Um, we had an Instagram for a little while, but again, it was the same thing. There was no sort of like, um, you know, most twenty-five and thirty-year-olds, they don't really care about town politics. So, um, it was getting no traction. So we focused a lot of our stuff on, um, Facebook and the email newsletter now.
Okay. Yeah, that makes sense. Um, my kids say they're, they're all over eighteen, but they're not much over eighteen. And they all say being a nepo baby in North Borough just means you have to go to town meeting.
Yeah. Yeah. So it's one of those things where it's just like, you've got to figure out where the people are who are, you know.
Paying attention.
Paying attention. And that's the best way to get them the information. Like I said, I've spent a lot of time learning about, you know, TikTok, Snapchat, all of that other stuff. But there was just no bang for the buck. But if at some point, you know, it turns over and there's a new social media or there's a new sort of trend or something, I'll be the first one there trying to figure it out.
No doubt in my mind. Absolutely. Okay. So my question is actually about, um, traffic and safety. So we have, uh, some industrial areas. We have a lot of eighteen-wheelers going through town. We have a lot of people complaining about various butts. I mean, every community is going to have traffic and safety issues. Um, but one of our biggest problems is, um, having eighteen-wheelers going flying past our high school driveway. So we have brand-new sixteen-year-old drivers taking a left onto a road and eighteen-wheelers are coming at their car. So, um, it's, it's, it's a, it's a really stressful, um, point of, um, concern for a lot of the town.
Yeah.
And if it isn't, if you don't have kids at the high school, now you know you will and you just, you don't want to be that person. So anyway, but it's not just the high school. It's other parts of town. We have a lot of industrial areas and a lot of truck traffic as well as cars. So, um, what's been your experience with, um, that kind of thing and?
Yeah. So it's hard, right? So we do these things called neighborhood meetings, um, every summer. And so we go around to sort of like the five or six elementary schools. And we tell all the neighbors that we're coming, all department heads. And, um, we all go out there and we hear sort of all their complaints and issues and everything. And the number one thing, so there's a school, um, in Bill Ricker and it's called the Hajar School. And the number one complaint that always comes up there is truck traffic, eighteen-wheelers rumbling down my street, jake brakes, um, everything. And it's a really tough conversation to have because there's certain things that you can do and then there's certain things that you can't do. So you can't outlaw jake brakes because it's a federal safety issue. But with eighteen-wheelers, what we've seen is that there's some places in town that, um, eighteen-wheelers should not be driving down. And so what we've done is, right, we have banned eighteen-wheelers on some streets. But the thing is, is that you can't just ban eighteen-wheelers on one street without it affecting another street. And then if you ban eighteen-wheelers on that street, another street is going to ask you to ban eighteen-wheelers. So what you need to do is you need to look at the whole entire town and its sort of traffic patterns, like as a whole. And if you ban truck traffic by the high school, what does that mean for the neighborhood next to the high school? Are those trucks going to start going down the neighborhood? And so it's something that you have to look at sort of holistically. And maybe it's a no left hand for trucks here. And maybe that sort of alleviates the problem. Or maybe it's a no right turn somewhere else and maybe that alleviates the problem. But it's not just like a, you know, you, that is one that you can't just hit with sort of a sledgehammer. That's one you got to thread the needle really to figure out, um, how to do it. And so, you know, you have to take a holistic view of the entire town. And then when you decide, you know, I'm going to ban truck traffic on X, Y, Z road, that's your policy and that's it. Because if you start banning truck traffic willy-nilly on another road, it's going to affect a whole nother piece of town that you had no idea. So, um, you got to look at it holistically. And once you do it, you got to stick to your guns and that's it.
Laura.
Thank you. So can you please give me an example of a complex problem you have successfully resolved? And highlight your problem-solving skills, uh, and negotiation skills?
Okay. That's an interesting one, right? So, um, let's think. So a complex problem, right? So our param- so we run, in the town of Bill Ricker, we run our own paramedic system. So our paramedic system is separate from the fire department. So we have seventeen paramedics. And so we have four on at all times and they work a ten-hour shift and a fourteen-hour shift. And so they wanted to go to a twenty-four-hour shift. And so there's all sorts of research out there about why a twenty-four-hour shift is not safe for paramedics. And so we were really sort of fighting back with the paramedics about this problem. Um, twenty-four-hour shifts is not safe for the residents. It's not safe for the paramedics. And when a paramedic shows up at your house and he's on a twenty-four-hour shift, you're probably not getting the best care as that if somebody was on a ten or fourteen-hour shift. Uh, but they really wanted twenty-four-hour shifts. And so that was one of the major things that they were putting across on the negotiating table. And sort of they were not going to get off of it. And so there was a bunch of different, and so, and that's one thing that we did not want to give on. But we needed to come away and at that time, we were losing paramedics left and right because our pay was low. And, um, they were leaving to go to private ambulance industries for a twenty-four-hour shift. So we had to sort of figure out, how can we sort of rebuild our paramedic system while not going to twenty-four-hour shifts and, you know, not giving them an insane contract that crushes the taxpayers? And so there was all sorts of these like little language changes that they wanted. And we gave them, you know, a Juneteenth holiday. We gave them a little bit more vacation time, personal time. There was all sort of these things that we were able to maneuver and give them, um, to sort of ease the burden of not getting twenty-four-hour shifts. And then we fixed their salary schedule. And so what their salary schedule was like before is that they would get a step at like one year, five year, ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, thirty. So it would take people thirty years to get to the top of the scale. And so, you know, paramedics, they rarely work for thirty years now. So they eventually move and go into sort of something else in healthcare or, you know, a different job. Um, and so we figured that the best way to, you know, retain paramedics was to change the salary schedule. And so we made it a yearly thing to fifteen years. Um, and so after some back and forth and, you know, lots of union negotiations and discussions, we were able to finally come to an agreement with, um, you know, the paramedics on, you know, not going to twenty-four-hour shifts. Um, you know, changing their salary scale, giving them, you know, all these sorts of different language changes. And we went back to fully-staffed paramedics within three or four months. And the union president, he actually texted me, good luck tonight. So I don't know if that was good, if that was bad, if he was waiting, he couldn't wait to see me go. So I don't know, but we have a good relationship.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. So, um, I don't know if you're aware that we have an historic mansion in town that we own. And we're currently trying to figure out what to do with it. Um, and I'm not going to ask you what to do with it, but do you have any opinions about the value of historic properties? And, and how they can affect a town? Good or bad?
Yeah. So I'll tell you a funny story before I launch into it. So my, when we were, me and my wife, we were looking for a house. I love old historic buildings and historic homes and all of that kind of stuff. And so we walked into this like beautiful historic home in Andover. And I'm like, you know, gloring at like the floors and the walls and all of this kind of stuff. And my wife and the realtor are like talking over here behind me and they're talking about pulling up like the old historic wood floor and putting like vinyl plank down. And I was like, you know what? Just let somebody who will appreciate the history of this house buy this house. And so we didn't end up buying it because I didn't want her ruining the history of it. Um, and so, you know, I love historic buildings. I love, um, you know, historic homes. I really appreciate all of that stuff. And so in the town of Bill Ricker, I recently did, um, a historic renovation of a old schoolhouse. And so it was built in, um, eighteen fifty. So it was, you know, it's pretty old. Um, and so what we did is we, we restored the old, um, you know, the old building. It's a small building. It's, you know, it's probably about, you know, a little bit bigger than this. And we put an addition on the back. And so, um, we kept the front. We, you know, did a historic rehabilitation to the front. We kept the, um, you know, the historic doorway, the bricks. We even brought in like a historic consultant to sort of, you know, um, say, you know, this is what it should look like. That's what the bricks looked like back then. This is what, you know, it should match to. But, um, and so we spent a lot of time doing sort of the outside of the building. And then we put an addition on the building. And the addition on the building was sort of controversial because people wanted it to look like the old building. And so the thing about additions onto old historic buildings is that you're never going to match what they were able to do in the eighteen fifties. You're never going to be able to make something the way that they made it back then. I don't know how they made it, but they made it a different way than we make things today. They don't, we don't have the same materials, the same bricks, whatever. Um, so, you know, we spent a lot of the time educating the community about, you know, it has to, you know, respect tradition, but also be a little bit different because you don't want like blobbing on a, a new addition onto an old building that you're trying to, you know, make it look the same. Just never comes out correctly. Um, and so we ended up putting our cable access studio in there and it is, uh, beautiful. It's state-of-the-art. It's unbelievable. After the interview, you should look up the How School in Bill Ricker because it's unbelievable. Um, and then the select board, they bought a piece of property in the downtown and, um, we're doing a historic revitalization there. And so the nineteen, this building probably goes back to like nineteen oh-two or nineteen oh-five. And so, um, it was a grocery store up until like the nineteen fifties. And then in the nineteen fifties, um, the Masonic, um, Association bought it. And so they changed the architecture to like a Greek revival sort of architecture. And, um, they changed the architecture to like a Greek revival sort of architecture, and they, you know, changed the whole entire building. And so the select board bought it, and they wanted to bring it back to the old sort of Gracie's Grocers. So we've went through the whole entire design process to bring it back to the old Gracie's Grocers. So, you know, I respect history, I appreciate history, and it's very important in the town to not sort of lose that history and, you know, everything that got a town to where it is.
Thank you.
Lisa?
Okay, now, you've worked both for, or both as an assistant town manager and assistant town administrator, is that correct?
I've worked only as an assistant town manager.
Okay.
Was that, what was the question?
Well, that's not really a question, that was supposed to lead in. So, in the case of having an administrator versus a manager.
Yeah.
The administrator is kind of given a blueprint, so to speak, by the board of selectmen and their vision of what they see for the town. And that vision lays out many of the things that the town needs to have taken care of, or that many people would like to see. Have you worked with a vision, and do you plan to work with a vision?
Yeah, so I mean, the select board in the town of Billricka, they set the policy for the town manager and, you know, the staff. And so, we carry out the will of the board. At the end of the day, that's our role and that's our job. So, if you guys, you know, laid out a vision for me, I'm taking that all the way to, you know, as far as you guys want it to be taken. At the end of the day, right, it's your community, and so you have a vision of the way that you wanna see your community look and your community be. So I would, you know, take that vision all the way. And so, I mean, in Billricka, right, like I was saying before, we had that capital facilities committee, and so, or, I'll give you a better example. So there's a piece of property in the town of Billricka, and there used to be an old school on there, right? And the old school was built in like nineteen-fifteen, and nobody took care of it, and it was falling apart. So we had to demo it. And so now, what it is, it's right on our main road, and it's a big sort of open field. And it would be a perfect place for mixed-use development. If you put, you know, some commercial on the bottom and some housing on the top, it would just like the perfect spot for something like that. But the community doesn't want that. They want it to be a park. So guess what? You know, it's a park now. And that's kind of what it is, and that's probably what it'll stay as for, you know, whoever knows how long. But, you know, you have to have the community perspective, and you have to have the technical perspective, and you have to sort of mesh those together. And I'll give you my opinion on what I think the best technical perspective is. But, you know, I work for the will of the board, and so if the board says, you know, there's gonna be a park there, I'm gonna make the best park there in that location, so.
Well, that concludes our questions of you, and I will turn the tables and ask you, are there any questions you would like to ask us?
No, so, I mean, I've done my research on, you know, the town, I've done my research on the board. You know, I think it's a fantastic town, it's a fantastic community, it's a place that I would love to work in. And so, you know, I hope you'll give me an opportunity to be the next town administrator of Northborough.
Great. Nancy, thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Oh, my gosh. We have a chair blocking the wires there, so we don't trip anybody. Great to see you again, thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Oh, nice to meet you.
Five-minute recess again. We will resume our meeting. Thank you very much, and our next and last candidate.
Yes, so, Mr. Members of the Select Board, I want to introduce Tim McInerney. Tim is a young man who grew up in Lowell, Massachusetts, and worked in Massachusetts, a number of states, but Massachusetts for about the last twenty years. He's a neighbor of yours in Grafton, he was the town administrator there for twelve years. Tim, the Select Board.
I don't know how I feel about being a young man again, but...
You're younger than me, my man.
Hi, how are you? Thank you. Too formal to shake everyone's hand, or you wanna wave to the end? All right, this will be awesome, thank you. It's good to see you again.
Great to see you again, Tim.
Appreciate it.
Hi, nice to meet you.
Tim McInerney, nice to meet you.
Welcome, it's nice to meet you.
Hello, how are you?
Hi, Julian Hirsch.
Hi, do you have a husband and a doctor?
I do.
Okay.
Nice to meet you again.
Nice to see you. Nice to be back, thank you.
Yeah, welcome back, Tim.
I didn't have an open Starbucks to bring you coffee, so I apologize for that.
So, the format will be familiar to you, that the first thing I'd like to do is ask you to tell us a little bit about yourself, particularly something that's not on your application documents, and let us know if there's anything particular about your job history or anything else that you think we should know. And then we'll go down the line and ask you some questions.
Great. I'm gonna try to make your job easy today, that's my job, is to make your job easy. So, I don't know if it's gonna, I don't know if it's gonna work out, but I feel like I have a mulligan, right? Your committee was so diligent, they had thoughtful questions to me, and I had time to think about how I responded and what I told the committee and what I'll tell you. You two will have to just grin and bear it because it'll be redundant, so I apologize for that. So I'll say that upfront. But, my name's Tim McInerney, I grew up in Lowell, Massachusetts, I went to public schools, I went to a trade school, I went to a grade a little regional technical high school. And the reason why I mention that, because I think the underpinning of my work experience and my college education really was derived from that experience of high school. So, I worked for about a year after high school, and then I went to Suffolk University for a master's degree, a BS degree in public political science. I remember where I was, it's a long ago. And after that, I did work in the private sector. But while at Suffolk, I took advantage of two internship programs. One was in London, I worked overseas with learning disabled adults, reintegrating them back into society. If you remember the nineties, you know, everybody was privatizing everything, national level and so forth. They were doing the same thing overseas, and they were adults who had been institutionalized for whatever reason, and they were going to group homes. And I had a chance to spend six months with a lot of people that had a lot of problems, but we tried to get them on buses, get them into jobs, teach them how to wash clothes, wash themselves, cook, clean. It was an amazing experience, I was, I don't know, what was I, I was under twenty, I think. So that was an incredible experience, a good learning experience. When you look at my resume, it's, you know, it's twenty-plus years of local government, but I've worked at every level of government. After that, I went back to school for a semester, then I went to DC and worked for a US senator. And that experience was amazing, I was just a legislative intern, but I got to do everything from answer phones from Carol King, which is an interesting conversation to have with someone, who wanted to talk to Ted Kennedy, so, you know, I had to make that arrangement, to doing legislative research on, you know, foreign affairs. So, and a lot of time spent in the senate hallways, which was just an amazing experience as well. Graduated, and I worked in the private sector, and then I decided I wanted to get into local government. I knew I would need a master's degree, I went to the University of South Carolina, and there I did two internships as well. So those, it's a two-year program for a master's degree. But I did spend time at the South Carolina Ways and Means Committee in the General Assembly, so I was at that level of government. And then I worked for a county government in Lexington, South Carolina. So, I coveted from a bureaucratic standpoint, from a legislative standpoint, and all the while, you know, I've always wanted to get back to Massachusetts. I was in South Carolina for two years, and then I went to Ohio for my first city manager's job, which I think Mount Healthy, Ohio is on there. This is an interesting city, it's one square mile with eighty-six hundred people. So we were very, very densely populated. You have about eight-hundred-and-twenty-six per square mile, so think about that, in terms of how dense that was. Small community, just north of Cincinnati, was very fortunate to get that job. Nine-member city council with Rs and Ds behind their names, so it was very partisan as well. So for me to walk in there just out of graduate school was very challenging. I felt I was fairly successful there for four years, but I had an opportunity to come back to Massachusetts where I wanted to get back to family. I came to Salisbury, and from Salisbury, I went from Salisbury to Seco. I tried to keep on the borders of the state, and then I picked the middle when I landed in Grafton. I've had three interim positions, where Oxbridge, and then most recently in the city of Worcester, as a department head acting under the city manager for, I was there for maybe ten months. It was great experiences, too big of a city, too many, too many things that I couldn't fix, and that kind of bothered me, to be honest with you. The reason why I left Grafton, as you know from your charter, you have a pretty strong charter relative to the town administrator, and there's a whole process for removing someone from a position. And then town administrators have contracts, and in those contracts, it calls for removal with a severance package. And that severance package, and I think, you know, these guys will tell you, it's a deterrent for any board that just doesn't like the way Bob dressed today, or how this person came to work. And they just, they can exercise that right in the clause, and they can pay you. And they paid me. I could have fought it, but reading the contract, my contract that I signed, I understood that that was a provision. The caveat to this is, six months before I left, the current board sitting extended that severance, and extended my contract, because they were happy, all of my performance appraisals over twelve years, the longest-serving administrator in Grafton at the time. And they were satisfied with me. So they wanted to keep me, but they had an inkling that something might be changing in the wind, and it did. And those, that new board, that board changed pretty much overnight in two election cycles over a two-year period. And so I left with that severance package, and always wanted to get back, but what I've been doing for two years, basically, is helping my wife grow her P and L for her business, it's out of Cincinnati, and taking care of my three boys who are now thirteen and sixteen. So I had a, I had a great opportunity, don't get me wrong, I took advantage of it. I'm grateful I had it, because I think that was a tender time in their lives. And I got a lot of five-star ratings on Yelp for driving them everywhere they wanted to go. So, if you wanted to see that, that can be a testament to that. But I think that, I'm trying to give you a picture, if I can get the words out of my mouth, of who I am, what I do, and hopefully what I can bring to the table. But I'm gonna stop there.
Great. Thank you very much. Kristen?
So, thank you for coming, nice to meet you.
Thanks for having me.
So, we've been looking for a town administrator for a while, and this job came up in the spring. Why didn't you apply then?
I don't think I was ready. I don't think I was ready to just move on and just get back in. And it was springtime. No, I just, I knew about it because I knew Becca, but I just didn't feel like it was the right time for me just to get back in. But now, you know, I knew John... But now, you know, I knew John, and I will credit John for the budget that you, that this community has, you know. People that look in from the outside, the grass is always greener, right? You always see what other people are doing, and I try to take the good things that other people have, and I borrow them. And we built the budget, not around this document, but, you know, the GFOA award is a big deal, and I finally, it took me three tries to get it through Grafton, we finally got it for a number of years, but I took that from John. And I know some of your staff, and I know they're competent, accredited police department, things like that, just drew me in after the first, you know, selection process.
Okay. So, um, the, the rest of that question is sort of, there's, there's a lot of moving parts to the puzzle that is being a town administrator. So, where, where do you see your strengths? Where do you see you could improve? And what do you just find interesting about the job? And let me just add, because that's a pretty easy question, right? Like, you were expecting that question. So, I'm going to add on to it from what you just said, that I see it as a credit to you that you stopped doing it for a while, did something completely different, and like you said, got this quality time with your kids, which you will never get back, so good choice. And then, you're coming back to it, so that makes me think, you had time to think about it, and you do really like the job. Like, you like being a town administrator. You could have gone and, that would have been a perfect time for you to pivot and go do something else, but you didn't. You came back to this. So, so I've got that in my head, too. So, go ahead.
You're going to have to go back to the questions because I was so taken by everything, you know, the context you put it in, so.
Yeah, so strengths and weaknesses, but also most interesting part of the job.
Okay. I mean, there's so much variety in this job, and maybe by example is the best way to do it for Grafton. It was heightened 2008, the economy was in the tank, people losing houses, losing jobs, and no one wanted to raise taxes to fix anything. So, we had to find ways, and that was kind of my job, was to find ways to do things that, we were solving for COVID problems, we didn't even know what we were solving for. We built a fiber municipal area network, replacing the INET. So, this cable TV station goes out through the cable, goes to people's houses through cable, and you raise fees for that. We replaced that INET with fiber. So, we dealt with telephony issues, we dealt with IT issues, backup redundancy. So, that's, it's just an example of, it's IT, I don't want to be a total geek with IT, but, not that I know enough, but I know that that infrastructure, once it's in place, never moves. And I can solve problems, you know, by plugging an IP phone in, in a conference room that's bigger, so I can be six feet away from someone if I had to be and still had a phone and conference with someone else. Not thinking that we're ever going to have the pandemic we had, but, you know, that Loop Net or that INET replacement allowed us to do things like that. So, the variety of work, I sometimes think for weakness, I think I'm too fast in terms of I just want to get to years. But I think my underpinnings are democracy and transparency. I need to remember that we're here, this is kind of what's instilled in me, right, to protect the taxpayer. We want to do everything we can to not impact the taxpayer. And I want to do that in such a way that has excellent customer service. In 2004 or '05, I opened up a Cold Stone Creamery. So, I owned, I owned a business, I know that small business piece. I know what it's like to borrow $410,000 and make payments and get teenage kids to work for you and make ice cream and do all that stuff. And then I know what it's like to lose that business due to, like, Superstorm Sandy, you know, never reopening and selling that. So, I mean, so that was a piece of my entrepreneurship, if you will, so I know both sides of municipal government from that standpoint, and, and actually ran the town that that Cold Stone was in. So, I'm just trying to give you a flavor for how I came to reason that customer service is so important, and your employees are so important because they provide the service every day. And I see myself as a resource for them and an advocate for them and somewhat to insulate them. Of course, you're going to always counsel them in private or discipline them in private, but that whole HR piece, I'm sure you have questions on that, I can go through that philosophy as well. But the variety of tasks is what drives me to the job.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. So, as I'm sure you're aware, North Rose has got a lot of big projects coming up. We've got a fire station, town hall, elementary school projects, it's, it's a big list. And budgeting is really important for us, so I'm curious to know, you know, how does budget development, what does that process look like for you? Can you walk me through that, please?
I can. A calendar is important. Finance committee, or you have an appropriations committee, I think, involving them in the early discussion. I look at revenues first, because I need to know what local receipts is going to be, I need to know what new growth might be. I try not to put too much pressure on the assessor for that number. You have to track building permits, and you have to look at where growth is, but you have to look at the numbers from a revenue standpoint, and then you can set a realistic expectation of what people can ask for. And people should ask for everything they truly need, and if there's other ways that we can fund them, we should find those ways before we ask the taxpayers at town meeting. So, the approach is the timeline, keeping people informed of the timeline, showing up, getting data to people relative to new growth isn't going to be there, free cash won't be certified, whatever the, whatever the matter is, keeping people informed and in the loop.
Thank you.
Julian.
So, when you say keep, keep people informed, you're, you're not talking just about the finance committee and the appropriations committee. You're talking about the whoever's interested in town.
Yeah, I mean, you really, I mean, the board has to, has to know what's going on. Because you're going to get questions wherever you may go, and you're going to want to have at least somewhat of an answer. Do you know where we stand, you know? I've watched some of the meetings, and I know that people get questions about the fire department, why hasn't that been built? And it's, those are hard questions to answer when, and you just need to be able to give people little, and they got to be in small chunks. It can't just be, I'm not going to write this 15-page memo every Friday. I'm going to give it, hopefully, to the board and to the community in small, small doses.
So, I, there's something I'd like to ask you about in your, in the answer to your essay question. And that was about housing and, you know, I think Grafton is probably facing MBTA, we're facing it. And I, I'm really curious about your suggestion that you do like a pilot program. So, it, just to refresh you, it says, "I believe that North Rose wants to see housing in its downtown area, it will need to alter zoning. By conducting a pilot program with an overlay district, you can have a small segment of the downtown built as the town envisions with, with housing integrated into that area of the business district." That's a very interesting idea.
Yeah, it's, it's geography, right? The pilot is the area, so you take your most, this is a bad word, blighted area, which I don't think you have a serious blighted area, but area you want to focus on and designate from Street A to Street B, that's the pilot area that you want to implement a program like that into.
Okay, thank you.
Hmm, that's it, huh?
You all set, Julian?
Okay. You have, I mean, it's interesting because you come from my neighboring town, and you've had many years there to build that town up, and it's quite lovely now. You know that we have a history, and we have an identity crisis. What's your strategy for the economic development here? Like, how do you think we're going to, you know our downtown, how do you think we are actually going to create a desirability to get economic development coming to the downtown area?
Well, I mean, you're fortunate in a lot of ways because you have a 75-25 split for commercial industrial versus residential. So, if you take that area, you have to start with the landowners and find out what, what their long-term goal is, what they want to see, and then have a visioning session between the board, between planning, and between those landowners to see what can be done and what they want to see happen. And it's not, I, you know, I just can't tell you that there's going to be one answer. You lack trees along 20. I mean, that's just, it's just known, it's just, there's not a lot of trees there. It's just, it's asphalt, and that's it. And it has charming spots and pockets. You know, we might stop by expanding those pockets to make it more desirable, but tree selection is a difficult thing as well. So, I'm not advocating trees, but, you know, you do need some streetscape through that, through that whole area. But you got to start with landowners.
Would you be able, do you have connections as well with the legislature and going into getting, you know, some help? Because we have Route 20, and it's.
Yeah, I mean, we, we had a problem building a fire station in Grafton, right? It got built, and they pulled the truck out, and the truck is, you know, maybe eight feet longer that the guys stand on and stage off of, but it, they pulled onto 140, which is a state road, and it bottomed out on our land. So, we had to figure out, how do we raise the road? We did that, and we, you know, because they really couldn't scrape the bottom of the truck every time they went out for a call, no matter how we turned the truck, anyways. So, those small things, we, we have a delegation, they're receptive. We had them in probably twice a year, you know, Michael Moore and then Rhett Meridian. You know, I, I wouldn't say I have connections, it's more of I have tenacity to get people to pick up the phone and have a conversation about the problems that North Rose is having, and let's work to solve them. I mean, it's their highway, but let's find a way to solve whatever problems face us.
Great, thanks.
Thanks, Lisa. So, as, as you know, we have not had a full-time town administrator for about eight months, which to some may look or sound a little shocking, but the sky has not fallen, and that's due to the excellent staff that we have here. And we have, do have some vacancies, as I know you're aware. What have you done in the past to attract and retain quality talent?
You know, you go, you go through the general, you know, the MMA, word of mouth. People who work for you, you know, work for any individual that they respect and admire, they will try to recruit for you, to bring people in. That's, that's one way. I've used church bulletins to put positions in, so people, you know, going to the local church will know that there's, there's an opening, whether it's a committee assignment or employee. To retain people, you know, I, I bought a grill with my own money, and I grilled town hall in Grafton many, many times. One time, I had undercooked chicken, which no one was happy about. I cooked it the day before, it was burnt on the outside, it was horrible. But I'm not a bad cook, but I just want to tell you that I will, I want to.
You will, you will poison all of us.
I want to, well, someone, someone identified it before anybody else hated it. So, yeah, I was embarrassed. But I, I think, you know, you gotta, you gotta go with what works in terms of the staff you have, they know people, they know, the people they know know the work that they do, and hopefully that drives some interest. And to retain them, you just need to treat them with respect, courtesy. Again, you're going to counsel, you're going to have to discipline, you're going to do that stuff in private, when you're going to acknowledge them for their efforts, you're going to do that publicly, you're going to have, you know, you're going to celebrate their successes, and you're going to try to listen to their needs, you know. My staff, I mean, we're in a 57,000-square-foot building, which was an old K through six, I guess, building, it was an old school building. And it just, no one ever thought about it. It was just, put, put the people there, they'll do the work in there. And, you know, we work together, we formed a building committee internal to fix the things that were wrong in terms of operations and workflow. So, you know, I want to say I have all the answers, but ultimately, our staff is going to give us the answers. I'm going to find a way to get it done as cheaply as possible, as effectively as possible.
Great, thank you.
Um, so, uh, my next question, it always kind of goes really well with Mitch's question, where he uses the phrase, "And the sky didn't fall," which I thought is funny. Anyway, no one else is laughing, that's awkward. Okay.
I'm just wondering where this is going. And then the sky fell.
Kristen made a story out of it.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
What would the sky falling look like to you? Because I mean.
I think everyone quitting.
Really?
Yeah. Yep, yes, that would have been bad for us.
That is, that's a, that is a nightmare.
That is a nightmare. And we did have, so, this works. We had our, our finance director just is, left or, yeah, he left, for South, for Westboro. So, that was tricky timing since it's budget season coming up, right? And I know he left things in as good places as he could, and he was moving towards a better job with more pay.
Fair enough.
Fair enough. But that would have been the sky falling if, like, lots of other people had quit at the same time. That said, so as a manager, your management style sounds pretty open and collaborative, would you say?
I think that's a good word.
Okay. And, um, the fact.
Somebody agrees.
Somebody agrees.
AI is here. AI is here.
Thanks, Buzz, for making us look like we.
I told you they were a very humorous group.
I want to know how many laughs I got tonight versus the other two candidates. That's all I want to know.
Right. But the fact that you said you grilled for the staff, that made me think of something Mike told us recently. He's our current interim, I guess you know him.
I do.
He's sitting right there.
He told me the budget was done. All set.
He said, at where he, wherever he was working, in December every year, he would throw a party on his dime, and he would invite everybody in the town hall, including the Select Board, and this was new to us, especially Julianne and I, who have been on the board the longest, because that was not the way John ever did anything. And we were like, that's allowed? You know, so, basically, what I'm wondering is, well, I'm also thinking of some things that Mitch has said. This is really, this is way too much backstory. But Mitch has always said, he's sort of the buffer between the Select Board and the town administrator, and the town administrator is sort of the buffer between the staff and the chair, or, you know, all of us, whatever. Like, so, the two, the chair and the TA are kind of the buffers, right? Is that how you sort of see things, too, or?
Yeah, I mean, it really, I mean, we don't, you know, a, a great interview is a great conversation, so if we're, it's going to take time for us to get to know how we're going to work together. You know, the chair is usually the point of contact for, you know, a fire, a death, motor vehicle accident, fatalities, things like that. But it takes nothing to send that text to every member from me. But if, you know, however the board wants that to work, it'll work. So, either way.
But as far as like the staff, if we had.
As long as, as long as the board doesn't give direction, because if it gives direction, you know, we could be going down this path to, you know, plow this street, fix this road, and then somebody comes along and pulls, or asks someone to go do something else. We need unification in, in that task and finishing that task. Call me, and if there's something wrong, you know, on Main Street, East Main, South Main, how many Main Streets you have, I know, we're going to go there and we'll take care of it. So, it's not, yeah, direct contact shouldn't happen, but sometimes you, you know, you might have grown up with these people, you might have a conversation with someone on DPW, and they might go do it.
Well, and we might be on committees with them and other things, too, so we do, yeah.
Hey, saw the sign down, can you go fix it? I would like to track that. I mean, it sounds kind of, you know, overkill, but, you know, we'd like to know the workload that people are doing.
Like, CC the town administrator on an email to, about something else with another staff person, say, is that a?
Yeah, I mean, I guess it depends what it, I mean.
What it is.
It could, don't waste the time of just putting a second person, just put me in, and I'll, I'll, I'll triage it, and we'll fix it.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Laura.
Thank you.
I like the background, by the way. So, if you give more background, it's, it's good because it gives me a sense of what it would be like.
I love how she navigates her questions.
Yeah.
It helps me follow, I mean, I.
It helps me follow, I mean, I, I appreciate it so very much.
Good.
Um, so this is, one of the questions, or one of the segments of our town that is really important to me is our seniors, I really, they make a big segment of it. We've got a really vibrant senior center with fabulous programming, they're really active, but the increase in the cost of living, the increase in housing costs is definitely a pressure for folks that are on fixed incomes. So do you have any things that you've done in the past that have helped make the town that you were in more affordable for people that were on fixed incomes?
Um, I, I don't know if they were on fixed incomes or not, we did an energy aggregation piece, which, you know, we aggregated the entire load of the community for electricity, we went out to bid, you know, it, it's, it's, you're at the mercy of a commodity.
Yeah.
But last told, you know, electric rates, you know, we were paying 8.9 cents when I left, it might be 14 now, but, you know, when we did the math on, if people stay with National Grid, I went with us, over the three years that we had it, it was over $3 million that we had saved cumulatively, the entire community. Might have only been on average 30 bucks a month for someone, but that's, that's kind of a big deal, it's half a cable bill these days. But you know what we, you know what my senior center was great at? And they were in my building, so I could always go down there and meet with Barbara and talk about the Meals on Wheels program. Right next to them was the assessor's office and all the exemptions and abatements that they offered, and educating those seniors at every opportunity, through the newsletter or through their lunch program, we would, the assessor would go down there, we would have conversations, I would be there, we would just, you would just be there to show up with the information that the community had for anybody who, who would need it. So we didn't really target people, income eligible, but we just, every information, every piece of information that we had that could benefit someone, we had all those events and venues to get that information to them.
Thank you.
So, I know it's a long answer, I apologize.
No, thank you very much.
So, my question is about our downtown revitalization plan. And, you know, many people believe that increasing the amount of housing is, is, is what you need, but there are other things, like business improvement districts, or, you know, encouraging public, private partnerships, that sort of thing. Do you have any experience with that and what is your feeling about those kinds of things? And I will go back to what you said about the trees, I do, it's no secret that.
We've talked about that.
And I think, you know, making our main street more pleasant with some landscaping would be a good step.
Yeah, you know, in Mount Haili, Ohio, we had a streetscape project that had, you know, the brick pavers, it had the trees, it had the lighting, it had, you know, the impetus was for traffic signalization, so preemptive signals for the fire and police to flash and change the light, those photo, photo optics and all that stuff. But the businesses along there, everybody, the way it was designed is everybody parked out back, there was limited parking out front. You know, you, here you just have a, you know, setbacks are all over the place along the road. I mean, you know, from 495 Partnership to CMRPC, there's, there's got to be a group or even the Collin Center that can take that pilot area, let's see if we can build it in one area that looks really the way we want it, and then we can expand from there. You see that on big construction projects, right? They build a facade of a building first and everybody can see it, this is how it's supposed to be built, this is what it'll look like, and it kind of sits out in front of the building and we go, why'd they build that little thing with the window? But that's what the building is going to look like. So if you could do that someplace down, downtown, it would give people a sense of, I, I do like this, I like this awning, I like this lighting, and they can get a sense for it and give you feedback, and then you can make the best decision for hopefully the majority of people who live in town. So I, I, I can't, I don't know everything about the area and who owns what and what people want to see.
Right, right.
So I'm just, I'm, I'm giving you kind of a canned answer, but you have to be open to all the possibilities.
Mm-hmm.
So I hope that answered your question.
It does, it does.
All right, thank you.
Lisa.
Okay, so I have, I've been looking about in terms of vision, select board vision, and how the, the select board gives a vision to the administrator to carry out. And, and how will you take that vision? I imagine it'd be detailed, so that'll help you out. But how will you take that vision and work with the other departments to bring it all together, so that we're all going down the same road at the same rate, instead of trying to go in two different directions?
Well, once, once, you know, if you go through a visioning process, you know, you've got to get that list together, then you've got to prioritize it. And to be frank, I think it has to involve staff in the vision of what the community looks like, it can't just be the board. I mean, from an operational standpoint, certainly, you can say, hey, you'll, you know, you'll respond within 24 hours or 48 hours for someone external, those type of things, if you wanted to set those policies for me, or that vision, I want to have that anyways, but it, I think it has to be in collaboration with staff and other committees and boards of what you're, you know, you're going to have your budget document that's going to have your mission statement, your vision statement, your core values listed in it. It's probably not just five people that are going to decide what that is, but once you have it, you know, you, you live it, you, you, you have it on the wall, you talk about what it means, and then in some cases, you know, staff, you might have to do role plays with them to understand, this is how you, you know, handle someone with a tax question or an irate person on the phone. So those are the, where the rubber meets the road type of things, but that guiding principle, your vision is going to be the guiding factor for us to provide that training to get them to understand that and act accordingly.
Well, I was actually talking more about what, what we, what we, what we think the town, the town's appearance and the town's, to put it all together, like, when you, why would you move to Northborough? What, what would be the driving force, do you move to Northborough? Northborough has a, has a certain ambiance to it, it's not just, not, not to confuse the vision with policies and stuff like that.
Okay.
So it's more of, what, what do we see in our town? Do we see our town as like turning into a little city? Do we see it to stay in, in a, a New England quaint vision? That sort of thing, that's more the question that I'm gearing to.
I, I do not have a good answer for you, because I just, until we define it, and ask people, you know, the town clerk, banker and tradesman, the assessor's office knows what property transfers have happened, you know, when we send out a new welcome packet to welcome those people to the community, which we used to do in Grafton, I don't know if we still do it, we need to find out why they, you know, other than this superior location that Northborough has to everything in the middle of the state, why did you choose this? And then we can build off of what their rationale was. Was it the schools? Was it, you know, the credited police department, the new fire station, the library that's really nice? You know what I mean? Those type of, and the programs for the seniors, you know, how do you encapsulate that and that becomes a vision? You just, you talk about it and you promote it.
Okay, thank you.
I'll say, Lisa. Ask a question about communications. So, over the last, you know, couple of decades, local press has nationwide, for reasons of its own, it almost collapsed in terms of its ability to fully cover local government. We're lucky in Northborough, we've got a great weekly that covers us pretty closely, but even 10 or 20 years ago, there might have been three reporters covering Northborough and now there's one covering multiple towns, writing, you know, maybe half a dozen stories a day, it seems. So municipalities have been forced to, if they want to, communicate proactively with the public, come up with some creative ways of doing that. What, what tools have you used in that area?
In Grafton, we started with news and announcements from the website, where people would have to sign up, and as things evolved with, you know, Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, you know, you're forced into those areas to get information out about programming for recreation, for council on aging. So you, you know, again, I think I said this and it's redundant, but you have to meet people where they're at. And I, you know, that phrase was coined to me from an assistant I had in Grafton, and we have to. You know, I spent many times in Grafton, when I first got there, in different parts of the community, in church basements, having like open houses to meet the staff and to meet me and to, to have a discussion, so they could have a one-on-one, you know, connection. People may or may not do that again, but it, it worked and people, you know, we had things we had to get done, so we had to have those conversations, and we didn't have, everybody wasn't, you know, things, it was said in 2008, 2009, not everybody has a computer, not everybody has a smartphone. Back then, you, you had to go meet people physically in a space and have a conversation with them. But you still have to be proactive, you have to use those, those things, the websites are good, you've just got to make sure they're updated, there's time bombs set on them so you can time them out so they can expire when the event's over, things like that kind of drive me crazy, but I pay attention to those things, I want to see that, you know, if we had a Christmas tree recycling, and now it's March, we're not recycling Christmas trees, let's take that down, but you can time those out. So using the technology to its fullest is important.
Thank you.
In Northborough, we have a Boy Scout troop who takes care of the Christmas trees, so you're off the hook. So, um, so Laura and I are both scout moms. Anyway, so you mentioned Northborough's superior location and we really do have a fantastic location, but that means we have also a lot of traffic and we have industrial areas, warehouses, and we have issues with 18-wheelers short cutting through Northborough. And I won't go on and on like I have, but what do you have to say to, how to, how to help manage that? Because it's a regional problem, all these little towns, Grafton's a little town, Northborough, Southborough, Westborough, Marlborough, Shrewsbury, we're all dealing with it, so what's your two cents on that?
You know, we, we, we started out being reactive when we got the phone calls for people using air brakes along 140 to, you know, curb cuts that, you know, got rolled over by propane tank trucks and so forth. You know, you start, you know, collecting how often this happened, Kimball's, Kimball's was doing a lot of stuff through Grafton, one year I was there, and they were just rolling over the railroad tracks and it was just, you know, dumping and just, you know, dirt and stone everywhere. So you have to have conversation, you've got to call those people up. I've called Kimball and said, look, you keep coming down this road and you keep dumping stuff, and they're, they're coming to clean it up. And the worst case, the heavy-handed solution is, the state police have a great heavy, heavy truck enforcement division, and you can call them out and you can have those trucks weighed and people's licenses can be at risk, you never want to do that, so you want to try to have a conversation ahead of time to try to fix it, but if you have to be heavy, you have to be heavy.
Great, thanks.
Laura.
So you may have already touched on this, you know, when you're mentioning the select board situation, but I would love an example of a complex problem that you successfully resolved, and specifically just to understand your problem-solving skills, your negotiation skills, is there another example that you can kind of walk us through, just to understand what that process looks like?
Yeah, I think, it's going back a ways, 2008, you know, the sky's falling, the sky was falling. We didn't have pay-as-you-throw, I had to establish that in short order, Central Mass Disposal, I think, was the group that was collecting our trash at the time, and gas prices were phenomenal, and they came to me and said, oh, we need to increase your contract. And it was like mid, mid-year, it's like, there's no provision for it, we're not going to do it. So I had to reach out to El Harvey and I had conversations with Ben and BJ and we, it's exempt from 30B, but we went through a process anyways, and, you know, in terms of solving the problem, I had a million-dollar program and I had just tax dollars for that. We had those little bins for recycling and that just wasn't working, our recycling numbers were so low, it was ridiculous. So we implemented pay-as-you-throw, I had one board member, one more board member that voted to hire me at the time, but when I brought this to him, he's like, no way, we're not going to pay for trash. And he wanted to go to town meeting, he thought it was a town meeting responsibility to do this, and it was not, but we, I looked at it as an opportunity to share with town meeting why we were doing this, because we were going to, A, increase revenue, 250,000 for the sale of bags, give or take, and then we, El Harvey was going to provide the, the rolling bins that you see on street corners today. We didn't want to do a subscription service and just get out of the business completely, which would have been nice, but then we realized we'd have six or seven trucks going down any given street on any given day, and then I don't know if someone's leaking hydraulic fluid, who am I going to point to? There's no way we're going to do that. So in terms of problems inside a problem, we, you know, we just solved those as we went. Went to town meeting, made the case, nobody except for Pete voted against it, not that they had authority, but we still went and we asked the question, and they supported it, because they understood if I could increase the recycling or reduce the tipping fee, it could be almost net neutral, I could cover the cost of transportation and be done with it. And that, the program was a million when I got there and it's under a million 13 years later. So it, it's a, it's trash, I understand it's not very, you know, it's, it's, but when you can go from recycling of, you know, 9% to 55%, that is just an amazing thing. And then work through all the problems when, you know, China wasn't taking cardboard and El Harvey had to store it, and we had a contract, so they had to take it. And then we found other ways to partner for breast cancer winners, for example, we sold pink bins separately as an additional bin that gave $10 of that sale to breast cancer winners. So it was just, those small little things you kind of think about and say, how can we make it? Another detail with this, we thought about, I don't know who asked about the senior citizens, we have two sizes of bags, two separate prices, because a senior citizen living alone needs a smaller bag, you know, I don't know if we thought of that, but we did that, a smaller bin versus the big bins for recycling for, for those folks as well. So we were very much in tune to what people's problems and needs were to sell that program. Again, driving that was a crisis of huge proportion financially, you know, the state aid reduction was nothing, was not a joke, and we, we made it through that without a layoff, without reduction in services, without a cop getting laid off. We, we made it through, which was, which was amazing. So that was a problem, I think I solved it, it's still going well today, hopefully they keep taking trash.
Thank you.
Okay, Julianne?
So my question is this, you live in a nearby town, so you probably know Northborough somewhat.
Yeah.
And as, as you've thought about Northborough, what, what characteristics do we have that you, you would say to yourself, I would capitalize more on this? We mentioned the location, but, you know, we have other things, like we do have a lot of open space, trails, a river, what, did anything ever enter your head where you said that, that would be an interesting thing to do in Northborough?
You know, I drive around, I've looked at the parks, I, I've brought my kids to this splash pad, I don't know what that, is that Otter Street? It's not Otter Street, what street is that?
That's South.
It is?
Yeah.
All right. You know, and then that hiking trail back there and the monument, the, the wall monument. I don't, I'm trying to think if the recreational component, it looks like the fields are in good shape and utilized, people are on them, people playing tennis, I see early morning cold tennis players, so that's, that's pretty, pretty great.
They're probably playing pickleball, aren't they?
Yeah, all right, I could do that. You know, the, you could play up, the schools are very good, and it's, that's very unique, right? Between Southborough, Northborough and that whole situation with the regional school districts. So I don't know if you can play it, are you trying to play it up to attract more people or to more identify the identity of the community?
Identity thing.
Yeah, I mean, the public safety component is, is, is a big deal, because people, you know, want to live in a safe community. Traffic is always going to be a problem, you know, we're always, the more development you have, the more traffic you're going to have. And, you know, you've got to have a, you know, a, a good planner in place and try to find solutions. And, and I would lend myself to those discussions if, if I could add anything in terms of experience of what it means to have UPS by 65 acres in North Grafton, and where are they going to go onto Route 20 when they leave that establishment, so they don't come back through town. So I'm not, I'm not doing a great job answering questions, nothing stands out other than the public safety in the schools. Obviously, you know, the, the diversity of the, the, the tax makeup of the community and, you know, the reserves you have, all of the financial pieces, the comparison to the state average in terms of income, all those things, just, you know, if you're looking for a well-run community, this is a well-run community. It, it is, and you need to, when you get to go to MMA in January, if you ever go there, you know, you want to be able to say, yeah, I'm. you know, you wanna be able to say, "Yeah, I'm Northborough, and I have a AAA bond rating", you know, and be proud of those things. And, you know, you, you've done a lot of work to get there, you should celebrate it.
Thanks.
Lisa?
Okay, so we've got a few projects that are voted on at town meeting. And they have specifics that the people talk about, and what they wanna see, what they don't wanna see. And in these, in these few instances, there was a change in the project. So though it moved forward, it wasn't what was actually explained at the town meeting and voted on. So there was a lot of discussion about how come this happened. You know, we talked about it, we had, we had some concerns, we were told not to worry, and then things went about rather differently. What would you do in the case of having that switch? I mean, if, if some, if, if the project had to change, you know, I'm just talking, not talking just financially, but if the project had to change from, from what it was encompassing, would you go back to town meeting and say, you know, "We're gonna have to change this, we'll put it off a year to do it"? Or would you try to work out something in the communication to let people know that this was, this was, potential was going to be happening? So there could be some more discussion about that. How would you handle that?
Without knowing the detail, I would say it has to go back to town meeting. If, if the scope of the project changed, it was voted on by town meeting, changed, it has to go back to town meeting for a second vote. We, we had a backlog of over $100 million of roads in Grafton that needed to be done, so we did it, this is just an example. So we did an override, we created a stabilization account just for roads, and we wrote the legislation town meeting passed, the bylaw, to be consistent with whatever Chapter 90 monies could be used for. Chapter 90's pretty broad, but it was one and a half million dollars, and we'd allocate it every year, it was voted on by town meeting. Now, town meeting knew, we'd have a list, we'd show them the list we were gonna do next year. So all went along, we would spend Chapter 90 money to do the design of those roads, and town meeting would vote on them. But if we discovered, you know, you know, Crosby Street, you know, was third on the list, but next year they were gonna put a gas line down that road, we're gonna not do that road, because I don't wanna pave it and then dig it up. So that's an administrative function, and town meeting understood that, because we had a little asterisk, if this were to happen, because there's so many times you'll see a road get done, and then no one had a conversation. I'm not, I don't think that happens here, but it happened a lot in Grafton and other communities, where I had two separate water districts, long story, I'm sorry, but two separate water districts, separate political subdivisions in Grafton. We'd go pave a road, no one would call the water district. And they'd say, "We're gonna put a new main down that road." You go, "What are we doing?". So we don't do that anymore, right? So we talked to the gas company, we talked to utilities, we talked to the soil department, who's internal to us, and we make sure we coordinate that. You know why we coordinate it? Because we get them to pay for that portion, so we don't have to pay for it as taxpayers. So little secret, you can use, let someone else pay for it if they're supposed to pay for it. But I think it has to go back to town meeting, but I don't know all the details, maybe someone will enlighten me. But generally speaking, town meeting has to reapprove it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I think we're out of our questions, but we have, we have another minute or two, because this is the last interview, if anyone has anything additional they'd like to ask them? If not, I'll, I'll turn the tables and ask you, is there anything you'd like to ask of us?
You know, you guys have a monumental task, right? You just, you gotta find someone that's gonna, you know, work well with you and work well with your staff. And, you know, you should be commended for taking the time and the thoughtfulness of your search committee and your follow-up questions. It can't be, can't be overstated, it's just, you guys did a great job. As for me, you know, I wanna be a part of a, you know, middle-sized community. I wanna be in, you know, 15,000 to 25,000 range, Grafton was 21 or so, and it's been growing. And I, you know, I think I had a lot of history and background and work experience that made me successful in Grafton, and I just wanna bring that to my next final community, if you can believe it, because I'm not a young man anymore, as Bud alluded to. But I am curious to know, you know, you've sat through three of these, and, you know, what, what types of, I should've asked this first, right? What qualities, what, what types of things do you look for in a, in a person that's gonna run the community?
I, I, I will answer that. So our, we like the open communication aspect of a lot of, a lot of the answers tonight have, have been very open-door policy, if you will, sort of, which is great. And that's really important to the residents, I think. The residents need to know that they can come to a new town administrator and have, have that person listen to them and take them seriously. That's, that's really important. And they elect us, so ultimately, they are the bottom line. But we also have seen our staff go through a lot this year with not having a boss and not having a leader at the, in the town hall, who's one person, you know? We've had two great interims, and we've been really lucky, but they know they're not staying. So, so we are also really anxious to get somebody who is the right person for Northborough right now. And honestly, like, all three of you are qualified tonight, that's not an issue. It's trying to find the right person who is like the right puzzle piece, or like Lisa put it last time, when we were interviewing Mike, he was, he was like, had the right foot for the slipper or something in Cinderella. I don't remember exactly, but it was a Cinderella metaphor.
That's poetic, I like that.
We're definitely, or maybe he was the slipper, I don't remember. But we are definitely looking for the right personality, as well as, you know, just a lot of, a lot of things right now. And that's, yeah, so that is a, a big job.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else like to answer that question?
I, I would, I would like to add to that. So we have a lot of, a lot of projects, a lot of things to do in town, and a lot of different opinions. And I'm looking for someone who will be a really good listener, but help us move forward with compromise. Nobody's ever gonna be completely happy with anything, but I think a good listener, someone who, you know, makes everybody feel like they're part of the decision, is gonna be critical to, to this town. And, and the other thing I, I have come to really appreciate about, about people in Northborough are that we have enormous talent in our citizens. And I think we need to make better use of that. Not just people who are, you know, who are elected or working in town hall, but people who wanna volunteer and offer their, their knowledge and their expertise. And I, I think we, I, we need someone to help us, help us do that.
Good, good.
Anybody else, Lisa?
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to add too, that, that we are, we're a different board than what was been here for, for a while, as, as a different administrator as well. We're, we're a more open board, we're interested in, in being involved and learning, and being able to answer questions when people ask us, and to have collaboration, and to be, to be part of the package, not just one little portion, but, but actually part of everything that's happening. And I think that's important too, because it's not, you know, the silos that have been built up really need to start to come down. And I've heard that from staff members, and even where, where they're working in different areas with other, other staff members. And I think that it's, it's important for us to create a new, a new world that people do feel involved and appreciated and respected, both ways.
Thank you.
And I think in addition to what my fellow board members have said, communicating, you know, we're all part of a team, and we're really setting the tone for the rest of the community, and I just wanna make sure that we're doing a good job communicating this and listening to what the, what the needs of the community are, and helping facilitate that, to keep the town somewhere that we all love to be in.
That's good.
I mean, you know, in addition to what's been said, we've got a lot going on in Northborough. A lot of projects, a lot of issues we're trying to solve. You know, we need somebody that can hit the ground running and keep a lot of balls in the air at once, and, and move, move forward diligently with success. And it's, it's gonna be a hard job for whoever we hire.
No, definitely, it'd be challenging, but there's opportunities with every challenge you have, so it's good.
Absolutely.
And it could be fun.
Yeah, I mean, if you're not gonna have fun doing it, you gotta, you gotta involve people, but you gotta, you gotta enjoy what you do.
Yes.
And I've always, no matter, even my fate was tragic in Grafton, but I, I loved every minute of it. So in every community, actually, I loved every minute of it. So I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you so much.
I told him I'd get you out of here by 10:30.
Let's see how long it'll take us.
What are you going to, in session now? Did we, I'm sorry, do we?
She's our assistant.
She's our assistant town administrator.
Sorry, I didn't mean to miss you the first time. I'll come say bye to you all again, I know you probably wanna move on.
Great to see you again.
We really wanna stand up for.
I will see you. Good to see you again. Appreciate it, thank you.
Diane's actually more than that, she is our glue.
She is our, yeah, she's our everything.
She's the center of our universe.
I'm gonna suggest we take also a five-minute, a five-minute recess again.
What an eight-minute recess.
Eight minutes, eight minutes is fine. Let's say 9:40, which is ten minutes.
Can you eat bugs?
Thanks.
Really, uh, a good answer for problem solving strategies. Like, he's done this before, he knows, he knows how to do this job, there is no question. Um, I liked the hybrid police car answer a lot, um. And he also had good strategies for how to pass things at town meeting. Um, so that's, that's all great. Um, I would say weaknesses are he, personality wise. He, he was the one I couldn't really figure out what he would be like on a day to day basis, I felt like he was. This was best behavior, even though he didn't seem nervous, it, it seemed like a very like. Professional version of him and I just know that in town hall. Um, when people are walking around during the workday, they are who they are and I didn't get really a sense of. That from him, I, I was a little perplexed what he would actually be like. Here in this office next door, um. He. A lot of his questions, uh, a lot of his answers were. Kind of what I expected, um. In not, not the best way, they weren't bad answers, there was nothing wrong with them, but I didn't hear like, ooh, that's an interesting new take on that. Um, and I felt like he was maybe. I mean, I guess one of the weaknesses would be personality wise. Not, um. Maybe not perfect, maybe not the perfect slipper. Um, and personality is important, so there's that, um. Since we have three really good candidates, you know, we can. Think about things like that and I just keep thinking about this whole retention, this whole staff retention thing, like we also want this person not to. Fall on their face. In any way, right, so we want, we want this person to jump into the job and then just. Take off and stay here for a long time and do a really great job. Um, so moving on to Clancy, I feel like. He's awesome, he's at the beginning of his, um, career trying to be a, the head guy. Um, in the office and I, I loved a lot of his answers to, um. A lot of the questions about like communication, he really has, I loved how they all did homework in different ways. Um. He, I loved how he has all kinds of ideas and you could see his eyes sparkle when you asked him almost any question. He's just thrilled to be doing this work, which is wonderful and that is really important and great, um. My concerns with him are that he lives kind of far away, which I thought we had a like a distance. Requirement, no, that's just the firemen, okay, forget it, firefighters, sorry, um. But, but, um. So, okay, so that's not a concern, so a lot of his answers to the more complicated questions were very general. Um, or he gave an example of what he's done in another town. And, um, that. Sometimes was appropriate and sometimes it really didn't apply to Northborough at all, he also. Mentioned the whole signs and facades thing, so I don't think he did his homework on that, cause that was a real awkward moment for me, um. He missed that meeting and then, um. He had a lot of great energy, um. But, wait, oh, I'm just concerned that. He might not, I mean, I, uh, I hate to kind of guess what might happen in the future, but Northborough could be a stepping stone for him. I, you do kind of have to consider that that's a possibility because he's, um, young and he's. Looking towards a whole career, right, the only one of the three of them that said, I want this to be my last town was Tim. Um. He, so moving on to Tim, so strengths are, he's very similar to Jeff in that he knows how to do the job. I didn't hear any answers where he seemed like. Oh, I don't really know how to do that, or, oh, I've never really done that before, it was all a hundred percent like, yes. I may not have done that exact thing, but I have done other things so similar and I have problem, problem solving strategies. For that thing, um. I liked his demeanor, I liked our rapport with him a lot. I felt like we laughed a lot, it may be because he was last and we're all a little slap happy. Um, but I did, I did like his personality and, um. I like how he lives in Grafton and that really shouldn't be a good reason to, to vote for anybody where they live, but. You know what, it's just lucky for him that he lives in a town that's close enough by that he knows Northborough. You know, like, he's been here a bunch of times, like, I've been to Grafton a bunch of times, like, they're just not that far away from each other. And so, you could picture him. Staying awhile, like you said, I'm not a young man, but he's probably in his early fifties, right, like, he's not going anywhere anytime soon, um. So I don't know, I liked all those things about him and. I would say, there was one answer to one question that I asked that I was like, I don't love that answer, but I don't remember exactly what it was. Um, and I may, as we go on, but. I'm sure there were. Other things that maybe other people have that were negatives about him, but overall, I feel like. He had the skill set, the place in his life, the good luck. To be a, the kind of the right guy at the right time for me and the, um. The personality, the, with the, a better fit personality, I felt like. Um, slightly. So, there you go.
This is just, I mean, it's so, I feel, I'm very thankful that we got this experience again and I really enjoyed meeting all of the candidates. I think I'll follow a similar format of, you know, the positives and, you know, the, the things that caught my attention. Um, some of the things that I loved about Mr. Bridges was, you know, his experience with budgeting. And the work that he's done from a warrant perspective. I loved how he said listening and goal setting was important to him. Um, economic development, you know, it was, it was a neat compliment to, to what. He had shared in his written questions, um, he does say he's got a lot of experience. I, I mean, I, I didn't mind the strong personality, I thought it was very, you know, I like that confidence. Um, as far as, uh, Clancy, uh, as Mr. Maine went, you know, I, I thought he had great an- answers, I loved his. Energy and his enthusiasm, but as I was listening to him, thinking about what we're working with with Anza. It's a complicated problem with what we're dealing with, with, um, some of our big projects. I was trying to imagine him in those positions and it was hard to envision that. And as we were going through that, I was really just trying to picture these people in those situations and I just didn't feel like, you know. I just didn't feel like he had enough experience with those, uh, those types of projects to really. Help us navigate some of, some of those waters, um, but I, I loved his communication skills, I love what he's done to really. Embrace technology for the community and help really, you know, represent the board and the town in such a positive way. And he definitely has a, a good rapport with how he works with his colleagues. And then for Mr. McInerney, I loved in his, um, in his, uh. Submitted form, how he talked about smart framework for how he sets goals and measures them. I think as we look to the future, like, for me, it's nice to ha- to know what to expect and I like the, the finality of that process. I like his, um, I like how he integrates with his staff, I like how he works with his board. Um, I like how he talked about hi- his streetscape plan, making sure that your zoning. Um, you know, just different things that we can do on a, you know, on a case by case basis. To help the downtown look better. And then I like how he involves staff so much, he wasn't willing to just listen to us, he wants to make sure that we're working together and I liked. That he's willing to collaborate in such an open way together with the board and staff as we really. Establish what we wanna look like going forward. So, I think there's, there's other things that'll come to mind, but that, those are some of the, the thoughts that came to mind so far.
So, I, I just want to point out, um, Tim also had experience outside of Massachusetts, remember Ohio?
He did, yep.
And that's, that's interesting because he got to work in a county government, which I think is. Probably really gives you some different ideas. Um, I gotta, I gotta go with Laura in the, um, as much. As much energy as Clancy brought to the, to, to the room. Um, and, and his, and his progressive ideas and stuff, I. Um. Wha- what is, what does Northborough need right now and? To, to answer that question for me, I think we need, we need, uh, maybe a little more experience. Um. Um, you know, somebody who's, who's been in that position and he, he hasn't really. Had a town administrator or manager job previously, so. You know, I'm, I'm not gonna repeat what my, what you have said, I agree with you totally, the pros and the cons and, and it is. I just also wanna say this is gonna be a really difficult decision.
Well, second time around, and it's the Cinderella intro. Um, I find, and it's interesting to hear, you know, everybody's viewpoint too. Because, um, it really hit home when Laura said. We have some serious issues that are gonna require some serious experience and. Ten, you know, tenacity, uh, just a, a variety of qualities. That I think you get from experience. And from, uh, for, uh, from a selection of experiences as well. Um, and I would have to agree that, but even by process of elimination, as much as. The social media and communication aspect is, is good, it's just such a small portion of everything that's happening. Because you're building a team of, of professionals coming in and working together to. Obviously put us, and keep us where we were with a little bit more, uh, you know, flair perhaps. Uh, where we didn't get involved and it was just a, you know, closed door and this is how it's going to be done, so. We're, we're opening the door, we're letting, because we're not gonna be here forever, I mean, when we change, that person's gonna have to. Continue, and so I think that's one of the most important things too is the, the stability of that. Having that person change or not change, um, and for someone, um, who's. Experienced so little, but everything's, oh, it's very shiny, oh, I li- oh, I like this, oh, I like that, it's lovely, but. What happens when somebody from the state taps you on the shoulders and says, hey, I have a cabinet position for you, would you like it? Yeah, maybe I'd like that, um, so I, I think that that, that that then brings me back to now. The two more seasoned candidates and, and looking at what each one of them brings to the table. Um, I do think that, um, that Mr. Bridges is the strongest certainly of all three candidates. He, he brings, um, a sense of accomplishment and. Stability, he likes things, let's, let's look at how we're gonna do it and then we'll do it. Not, let's spitball it and see how that's gonna come out and I think right now, we do need some structure, I think we need to. Get a, a little bit more of a guardrail going up because there's a lot of stuff that really. Really is going to have to take place in a shorter period of time. Um, financially, we're gonna have to make some great changes, I mean, we have to open up employee, uh, new employees. Not just new to the job, but new positions that weren't here before or weren't filled before and were just kind of. Maintained by one person when they have two people, two jobs with one person. That's gonna require more money, I mean, we're, we're talking about spending an awful lot of money, which is going to impact the tax dollar. And gonna impact the people who can stay, um, and, uh, and I think that's, that's a great concern of mine is. How everybody is going to be able to maintain, uh, their lifestyle with the things that are, that are starting to expand. In terms of our costs, um, we have. We have new people to put in positions, we have, we have departments who wanna add considerably to their staff. And we're going to look to the future for, um. Kind of financially having to meet what other towns meet. Because it's not gonna be the umbrella anymore of, of retirement that people are looking for. I think today's standards are that people are more interested in, um, how I can pay my bills now. And will I really be here in five more years or ten years, and I don't see twenty happening certainly, but maybe that's a personal thing. So, um, so that my, my tendency would be to go toward the, the stronger of the personalities. Because I think that that's really the, uh, that's what we need for now. Um, I think if we were in a better situation in terms of everybody who's in their place and we've already taken care of some of the, some of the really bad things that haven't been. Uh, taken care of yet, then it would be a little bit easier to just say, well, you know, I like. I like burnt chicken. Um, I do, I, I, I liked, um, I liked, uh. Tim on the first go around, I felt he was, you know, just a, a wonderful, um. Home guy, he's done some stuff, he's done some great stuff and he's experienced a lot of places and, um. Much like Laura going out and walking the world, um, I, I do, I appreciate all of that. Um, but, um. But I'd narrow it, I, I mean, are we gonna go around again to narrow down or what do, what do we?
We'll see where we are when we're done with the first five, first round.
First round, okay, so then I'll wait to see what.
Um, thanks, I, I, it's always easier to go last, I think, um, the. They're, they're, they're all good, as I said, they, they could all do this job, um, so as. I think either of you said, I, I forget who, like, we have the privilege of being able to get into some nitty gritty detail. That, um, we're luck, we're lucky to have that, that possibility, um, you know, just in order, or, or of, of interviews. Um, Jeff is very smart, very capable, uh, very confident, um. I thought there was, uh, there was a lot of Kansas talk of, of his experience in Kansas, which sounds like it, it. You know, made quite an impact on him, um, Kansas is a very different state than Massachusetts, um, you know. His time here, um, has been a little bit bouncing around, I think he explained that reasonably well, probably as well as. As one could, um, I don't know if he had the. The personality, if you will, that I see fitting in here to be. Really a collaborator with both us and the staff as well as some of the, as well as both of the other would. Um, Clancy, tons of energy and, um, boy, would it be exciting to see him. In this role and whether he gets it here or, or he'll get it somewhere else soon, I, I, I know he will, um. Uh, very enthusiastic in a, in a kind of an infectious way, which I, you know, I really appreciate. Um, I like his eagerness as, as for the communication because I think that's not just a, that's not just a small thing, I think that's a. That's a really important thing that we as a town are not doing what we should. Um, that doesn't mean that it has to be a town administrator that has done it before. Um, it should, it can be somebody, somebody else that can do that work, um, it's handy. If the town administrator has some experience with that, at the same time, I probably wouldn't want the town administrator spending his or her time. Uh, writing up emails and posting on Facebook, he may, may or may not recognize that, um. A- a- as the assistant where he is now, that's appropriate and it may be appropriate for. An assistant or someone else in that office to do that, which is what both W- Westboro and Shrewsbury now have. Like, a communications role formally in the title of one of the people in the administration office. And so, one way or another, I think that's something we should tackle, but that's something nice that, you know, at least one of our candidates. Has that experience, I think he's got a lot of really good deep experience for an assistant. Partially because it's a much larger community, um, you know, a lot of. A lot of detail on, on budget and on personnel and things, some of the, the different positions he's had, um, there. Um, I liked that it was a very conversational interview, as we also had with Tim afterwards. Um, on to Tim, also really, really moderately different, but I also really liked him. Um, very, very likable, very smart, very confident, but it was a very friendly confidence. Which I really appreciated, um, I felt like he would clearly be very collaborative. And very balanced to work with, I, I felt like he probably more than any of the candidates. Could fully and properly listen to a lot of different ideas. That I think he would wanna solve the problem, but he would appreciate. The value of taking a little extra time to, you know, to, to sol- to solve that problem and li- and listen to people. And make sh- so that people would know that they were heard and that's, um, I think that's really important. Um, I really appreciated the fact that, um, he's the only one that has proven he can do a town administrator for, job for awhile. And that's rare, I mean, it's, you know, people bounce around, we, you know, we had our last town administrator for a very long time. Compared to many, many towns, I am not worried, um, if. Uh, no matter who we hire, um, my, my hope is they stay for five years, I think that would be great, obviously I would like them to stay for longer. But knowing how quickly people bounce around in this industry and, you know, Bob and Buzz and Mike could, you know, could. Could clarify that if needed, um, I don't have a, an expectation of that. Um, so, you know, I, for myself, I would probably. Edge a little bit in favor of Clancy over Tim. Over Jeff, but not by, not by a lot.
So Clancy's your number one?
Clancy would probably be, and, and I think I'm the only one with that and that's fine, um, I love, I, I mean. As I, you know, I'm, I'm good, I'm good with all three, um, as I said, I slightly put Clancy ahead of, ahead of Tim in, in my book, but only. You know, ask me in another thirty seconds, I could change my mind. Yeah, so that's, I, I'd say that's roughly where I am. Um, so I, I, I think, if I'm reading correctly, I thought, not, and these were not votes, these were kind of first impressions. I think I saw three first impressions from the three of you of Tim, I think being. The number one choice, if you will, um.
I think what the first impression really was, was that. The four of us were a little less. Thumbs up on Clancy.
Okay, yeah.
I think we would rather discuss Jeff and Tim, am I right ladies?
Yes.
Sure.
And I'm, and I'm fine with that, I re- I, I really truly am.
Yep.
Yeah, okay, all right, so are, are, do we have consensus that Clancy, we're putting, putting aside?
Unfortunately.
Yes, okay, that's fine, these are three great people.
Yeah.
All right, um.
And, and it, with Clancy, it just, it goes to what I'm trying to figure out in my head, I, I think he's gonna be great. Just, just great, but is, is he, does he fit in Northborough now?
No.
And.
And with all our headaches right now.
Uh huh.
And I thought Anza was a really good, well, yeah, they'll change, they'll all change their minds, small obstacles.
Yep.
Um, no, but I thought bringing up, Anza was a good, uh, point and. And honestly, just White Cliffs is a lot and then we also have Town Hall. Just those three are really, really a lot and then there's also lots of other things. I did think that I could picture, so I'm thinking of Greg Martineau, our superintendent. He, I, I just remember from previous experiences how much town administrator has to deal with the superintendent. And I did think that, um. I, I don't know, I just felt like, uh, Greg would probably, um, really appreciate. An easy, um, personality and by easy, I just mean someone who's very warm and friendly. Um, and I don't think, I wouldn't say, like, I did agree that Jeff has a strong personality, right? Um, but in a, in a, in a perfectly good way, but I feel like, um. Tim would be a strong town administrator, like Mike explained to us once before. What a strong town administrator is and he referred to himself as a strong town administrator. So that doesn't mean someone who bosses everyone around all the time. It means someone who is willing to step up and say, look, I'm the boss, this is how we're gonna do this when push comes to shove. And I did feel like, yes, was Jeff the first one who would do that, probably, yeah, but then. You could totally see Tim doing that too and that was another place where I thought with Clancy. If he's dealing with staff who are. Quite a bit older than him and they've been around longer, is he, at the beginning, it would be, I think it would be a harder transition for him. Plus all the other headaches, all the other millions of emails the town administrator gets, um, I just feel like. It would, it would be a harder transition for him than it would be, I feel like Tim has already done all that stuff and he has. Demonstrated that he's been around. Um, one town a long time and he would have stayed, it was just the select board changed and for some reason they wanted somebody else is. What it sounds like, so, um, you know, and. I do, I do appreciate that and that is a, that is a point with Jeff that I am. It's another, it's, I don't know, he didn't give us any reason to think he would leave after two years. But he did do that in the last two towns and that's just bad luck for him, it's just like, good luck for Tim that he lives in Grafton, you know, it's not really. It's just, um, yeah.
Um, Mike, raise your hand over there, did you have something you?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, through you, I, 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 I love hearing all this, cause. Talk about, talk about being a political junkie, and thank you, I appreciate that. Um, I, I wanted to share with the board that of the three candidates tonight, one of them reached out to me. Today and wanted to know. Where the town is at, what kind of things are going on, what are the challenges, what are the opportunities? Uh, and that was Mr. McInerney, so I just wanted to share that with the board, that, that he did reach out, he was just, you know. What are the, you know, what are the landmines, what are the things that are good and, and, you know, how's the board to work with and, and. He was genuinely interested in.
And you still wanted to come.
Getting that information, he still showed up.
And he did ask us even what we, what our expectations were, which I thought was really nice, I didn't mean to cut you off, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, so, um, I, I just wanted to share that.
I really appreciate that, that's, that's very good, good to know. Um, do we wanna continue around in the same pattern that we did before? Are you, are you, I don't, I don't know if, I don't know if you're done?
I just talked, yes, so as you know. I just talked, yes, so as you know.
I just totally lost the train of thought. Can you come back to me?
Sure. You're tired.
So, because I want to see if, see if we can get to consensus.
Sure.
Were you saying that, that Tim is your preferred over Jeff?
He is, he is. I, I, yeah. Even though one of my questions, I was like, dude, I did not like your answer.
Yeah.
But see, I can't even remember what it was, because it was fairly trivial. No, I, I, 'cause I didn't ask about the trucks with that. And whatever he said about traffic and safety, I was okay. It was one of the other ones. But it was, it was a minor thing. It wasn't like a deal breaker. Yeah.
Okay, are you, are you ready to go?
Yeah, I'm sorry. It's, I, I really, I like them both for different reasons. I really like the approachability of Tim. And I really like his, you know, gathering feedback, asking what we want. So if, if I had to choose one over the other for where we are now, I think he's someone that we would work well with through some challenging situations. And hopefully, he would help us step back and look at the big picture and make decisions that, that are in the best interest of the town. So, sorry. Thank you.
Okay, so I, I'm looking back at my notes that I need, because I can't remember much anymore. Vocabulary's been a rough, a rough patch lately. So, one of the reasons I think I'm, well, Jeff had talked about having a financial background, a heavy, strong financial background. And, right, right, progressive local government and understands what it takes to be successful. He talked about economic development, and we talked about some of the different things for economic development, and one of which was, of course, our own water fire on Asper River.
That was very nice. That worked really well.
Water fire, and I was like, I, I mean, I watched it on PBS. It was amazing. We could do that. We could do that. Yes, well, I have been there. Well, I've been there, and, and I actually, this talked about how it started with, you know, just a mucky canal.
Yeah.
And now it's this huge draw, huge.
Most of that was buried under concrete.
Yes, yeah. So they spent all this time to do, and it's, and they're so excited. Everybody's excited. The two hundred and fifty people that work there for nothing are excited. And I see that for our town. I see us being able to, like, for me, and, and I was talking about, well, what, what do you think the vision is? For me, it's, we have, we have the water everywhere. Everything's groundwater in this one and that one. We've got the trails. We've got farming still. We've got, we have a mansion. That could be wonderful. The arts and entertainment for me are something important, because that does bring people out. Like, I remember there was a, a place in Westboro called the Vienna Coffee House. And you could go see, like, I saw Jeffrey Gaines, as close as I am to you, Mitch. It was so exciting, because the, just to have that closeness of being able to have this kind of entertainment come in, and it's a, I think that's part of the draw. Because our downtown is in tough shape. I mean, it's not just that there isn't enough area for trees, but the buildings and the owners of the buildings are all pretty much, we've been there a long time. And it's not, not a place that you have to walk to to purchase anything, unless, of course, you ran out of gas. But, so, so we have to find other ways to be able to say, why do you want to come to Northborough? You know, yes, to raise your family, yes, to, to utilize a wonderful school system. But, but we're not a city, and, and people aren't coming here for all the, the city stuff. So why can't they come here for the trails and for kayaking? And for, you know, setting a few pieces of wood on fire? And, and, and trying to figure out different methods of paying for things, which I do, I do remember him saying, that he was talking about, if I can find it in my notes. One second. Temporary financing, and he talked about, you know, then bringing a bond in and rolling it out. And, and I think he had a good, obviously, a better grasp financially of being able to doing some of this stuff that I think is really gonna help us if we know how to juggle the things in a way that is, that are proven. You know, I know if I, if I do this bond bill, and I do this and that sort of thing, how I can, how I can make all these balls work. I've, and I think the two-year, the two-year and the two-year, his, his remarks for leaving where he is now is that they were, they were looking at yesterday, and he wants to look for the future. And I think that's an important thing, because if he's looking, if he's looking to create a, a future, that's, I think, something we should all consider, is because that's what, where our legacy is, is what the future's gonna be. And, and sometimes in interviewing, we're, we're all pretty well, you know, I think we're easy to talk to. We don't, we don't hold back, or certainly I don't. Kristen, you don't hold back either. It's great. But, but I think that, I think that, that for the balance of everything that we have and our needs, it's, it's almost like, I feel comfortable with somebody who has that stronger financial background. Yep, maybe today he wasn't as apt to cook or burn chicken, but you don't know. Put a, put a grill in front of him, and maybe he could burn a piece of chicken. I'm sorry, Tim, I'm just kidding. So, but I do think that, I think that, right, last, Julianne says, right now, we need somebody right now who's going to be able to take everything and put it together with the confidence and, and the experience of all the other places he's been as well. Certainly, Tim's experiences were younger. He stayed in, in Grafton for twelve years, and now he's moved about in ton of different things. He had said Worcester was a little bit bigger than he wanted to deal with. We, we may have that situation because of the many balls in our, in our air right now that are big. And, and I think we have, we have a lot of people second guessing us all the time, and, you know, what are they gonna do next, those crazy people? But, but I do think that, that in terms of, you know, leadership qualities, ability to work with people, he sounded, he did say that he was collaborative and interested in, in doing that. And I just feel that, you know, he sees smart financial decisions written down, financial advisor in collective bargaining. So, that's, you know, that's why I would, I would lean toward Jeff before Tim.
Julianne?
So I have to agree with you, but then I say to myself, I feel like Northborough's a little bit in a, in a period of time where we, I don't know if healing is the right word, but, but like a really big transition with, you know, our previous town administrator leaving, we've had two interims, we're coming out of the pandemic, we've had a big turnover in staff. And I think we need a little bit of handholding also. And when I look at the, those two candidates, I think Tim is probably the person who would handhold. And but, but I think Jeff is, there's no doubt that he is, he would be a great choice. I mean, he's, his, his very, very professional demeanor doesn't, it kind of impresses me. But again, is that?
Is that what we need, what the town needs right now?
And that's a question for us to answer.
In a different town, in a different moment, I would, I would totally vote for Jeff, I think. I also feel like, and we are really splitting hairs, right? But since we have to, I feel like the, the fact that the first thing he said on strengths and weaknesses is his strengths is the budget was just a little bit of a red flag for me, because I just kind of expect any town administrator to, to be able to, to do the budget. It's part of the job. It's like saying, I know how to, and maybe, maybe there are town administrators out there who are terrible at budgets, and I just haven't run into them. But so far, all the, the people that we've had experiences with don't find the budget. I just feel like it's a black and white thing, like you either know it or you, you don't. And it's not really a talent or a strength, you know? So if that's the part of it you like a lot, then you're not gonna have the, the personal skills that our staff needs right now and our residents need right now because of our transition situation. That's, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. I hope I didn't.
And I agree with you. It, a town is more than a budget, right?
Yes, we've been saying that for a long time, so, yeah. Yeah, it's not really a seventy million dollar corporation. It's people.
Well put.
It, it should come as no surprise, because I said last time who would, you know, that it was neck and neck between two people, with one of which we've eliminated. I, I, you know, I think, I think Tim would be great at this job. I, I like the fact that, you know, he clearly wants to be a town administrator of, you know, whether you call us a small or mid-sized town, you could splice that a hundred different ways. You know, I think he, he tried, he tried Worcester. He tried a big, big city thing, and he was a department head. After being a town administrator for a total of, what, fifteen, sixteen years between a few different communities, that's gotta be really hard to go ahead. And he, he alluded to something like, he couldn't fix all the problems, because he was only responsible for one thing. And if you're used to being able to, to have authority over the whole thing, that's really, that's gotta be really hard.
He did say, his favorite, the most interesting part of the job was the variety of tasks. I thought that was really well worded.
We will have a variety of tasks.
We certainly do.
Yeah, so I, yeah, I, I mean, I, I really liked.
I think it's really important, too, how you feel as the chair. Like, it's important that all of us have an equal vote, of course, but if you had said, that guy was my least favorite, I really didn't like him, that would have a big effect on it, too.
I, I would ask to maybe have a little less importance on that, because the chair also can change year to year.
No, that's true.
Or, or, you know, so I, I, I appreciate that. But I'm, I'm just, I'm just one of five, and I'm, I'm placing myself last because I'm the chair.
Because you're a good chair.
Thank, thank you.
Can I make one more comment on this?
Yeah, absolutely.
I, I know that as we've, like, we, I think we've all alluded to the fact that there was a method of governing before, and now we're looking to the future. And when we were asking how the board will interact with staff, it seemed like Tim was very much open to us engaging, as long as we're not sending staff on a wrong task. I loved that he was very open to us, you know, working together. And I think that that's gonna be a really important part for how we build our relationships together with staff. So, if there's one thing that I want to take away from this, is that I really want to take him up on that and really better understand how we can collaborate and work together. So I, I liked, especially liked that. He didn't just say, well, this is the way the charter says it, and this is the way you should do it. He said, well, this is the way it is, but it's, it's a, it's a gray area. And so I, I think that that's a neat way to kind of lead the, you know, how you want to go forward.
If we could discuss it.
Yeah, I really liked that, so. Anyway, that's my last comment on that.
All right, so I think I am reading that four of us have a preference for Tim, with Lisa having a preference for Jeff. There's nothing wrong with that. I've been the only one on, on some things, too. Is that how I'm, am I reading that correctly? So, I mean, we, we have a majority. I will ask, I will ask you, are you comfortable with Tim enough to go forward?
Well, I, I mean, are you looking for unanimous?
I, I, I think the vote should be unanimous. That is very good practice to give somebody the, just the, the enthusiastic support of a board that they are going to work for going in. I don't think we have to insist upon it. I would say if you think Tim could do a good job, I would, I would ask that you support that. If you think Tim would, would really not be good, and your conscience can't bring you to bring him in as town administrator, go with that. You know, we could vote, we could vote split, but I, I, I would rather get to unanimous.
I, I like, I like what you're saying. I'm concerned, because I heard different things in the conversation that, that kind of, I didn't hear the collaboration as much, which is why I made the statement. I heard, when I asked about a vision, that the staff, we were gonna consult the staff first, or the staff had more, more input into what that vision was going to be. And that, I, that I had a problem with, because we are working toward doing things in the fashion that I've been told that this, what a selectman have to do two things. They have to, they have to hire the TA, and they have to create the vision and what is going on into the future. And as much as we are very careful to ask other people's opinions and staff and residents alike, I think we're very open to doing that, and I, and I really love that about where we are. That, that concerned me, that it was, that it was definitely more that feeling of the buffer. He was the buffer to, from the staff to the selectmen, as I heard, that the chairman was the buffer from the
As conduit more than buffer? I don't know. If I've said buffer, I apologize. I think conduit is a, probably a better term.
Well, he, no, he had said that.
Oh, he had said that?
Yes.
No, I said that. I said it, and he, he just kind of nodded and agreed, sort of.
So, but I mean, when the discussion, in parts of the discussion, a little concerned me, because, you know, a week and a half ago, I would've said, absolutely. And then some of, and, and I've heard this happens with a lot of people. You start hearing other things that you didn't, that didn't get questioned before, that didn't come up. I thought we asked new questions tonight, which are very important. And, and I want to be sure that, that, that our vision is, is important, that we are on the same page, that we have our staff saying, okay, we want to help you with that vision. Not, we know the vision better than you. And that's been going on for a while, with a lot of committees and things like that.
I didn't, I didn't get that, that reaction from Tim. I, I, I mean, I wrote down collaborative a couple of times on there. As far as generating, generating the vision, I, I did not get the impression that that was a staff-up process. I mean, it's, it's clearly the slight, we get elected for that purpose.
That's right.
And I, I, you know, I don't think he would've lasted a year in a town if he thought it was the other way around.
And I, I mean, maybe he said the staff could be at the meeting where we discuss the goals and the vision?
He did say that.
Um, but I didn't get the sense that they would have like an equal vote or anything. They would just kind of give their, sort of, opinions about how things would get done. And also, maybe, I, I mean, maybe I'm reading into multiple interviews on this, but it was sort of like helping us prioritize. The staff would be helpful in helping us prioritize, because we don't really know of our top ten goals, which ones can get done fastest, say, because we already have a certain amount of infrastructure in place or something like that. So I don't, I, I kind of just regarded that comment as staff could be involved because they could be helpful, not.
Well, and, and again, I, I, I love to get my staff involved whenever possible. But I do think that that's one of the things that, that once we put it in place, it's up to everybody to make sure that that hap- because we aren't, we aren't allowed to get involved in it after that.
Right, right.
We, we have to say, okay, here's the baby, you take care of it.
I think, can I, can I just, like, one example that he gave was how they had this big street project. And then the, the goal was set, and then he brought that back to staff, and they're checking with the water department, and they found out the water department's doing it. And so suddenly, they revisited, I think he was talking in his town meeting, to your town meeting question? And so suddenly they revisited, I think he was talking in his town meeting, to your town meeting question? And I, I get the impression that anytime we're going to set, you know, we're going to go through these discussions, he'll go back for feedback. But I didn't get the impression that he was looking to the staff to establish the vision. So is that, maybe I misunderstood something, but I just thought it was more like, if this is what you want, then we'll just make sure it fits in with what we can do. And, and that was my understanding.
Well, even, even you saying what, it fits in with what we can do.
Yeah.
Okay, that, that takes it away from, and again, vision is not, it's not the day-to-day.
I see.
It's not that I want to see the road down the street fixed. And, and that, well, we can't, perfect example was a guardrail that we'd asked for, for quite some time. Couldn't be done, couldn't be done, couldn't be done, for a number of reasons. And all of a sudden, it got done. And no reason why it got done over when it didn't get done, but it took several years to get something to be put up. So that's not what vision is.
Anyway.
And, and that's what's important to me is that we do, we do our job well and as well as we can. And I think we all want to do that.
Yep.
Um, and as long as that is something that we can, we can make that baby and then give the baby to be taken care of, that's fine with me. But I don't want to, I don't want to make the baby and then hear, well, yeah, you gave me a baby with blonde hair and I'm going to have to dye the hair brown, you know? I just, I just can't work with a blonde baby.
I think that's, that becomes the board's job to oversee that. That, you know, we need to set the vision and make that part of the annual review of how that's going, performance goals tied to the vision. Um, and if, if there's a dramatic change and somebody comes back, the town administrator comes back and says, uh, I know, I know you wanted a blonde child, but I, you know, I created a brunette, like it or not. I, I'm really bad, that's a bad analogy, but I couldn't come up with anything else. Um, you know, that's, that's our job to, to then have a very serious discussion with that person. Um, what I would expect is to further, to, to make that further is midway through the year, under the goal of make the blonde child, um, coming back to, you know, yeah, we really, we really can't do that and here's why, maybe it would cost more or maybe it would take too long or something like that. But we can, we can get the, the brunette and, uh, you know, we, we can do this. What do you think to us? And then it's us making that decision. I suspect strongly that anyone who has done a town administrator or a town manager job for any length of time understands that. And I'm, I'm seeing, you know, a nodding head, you know, over here.
We've been there.
Yeah, yeah, you've, you've done that work. Um, so, but that, that becomes our job to oversee, not the day-to-day, but certainly the year-to-year progress of those goals underneath that vision. Uh, and if something happens and this board doesn't react to it, then this board has not done its job. And I put that, I would put that on us, not the town administrator at that point.
All right, well, I mean, I'm sure that this, this is being listened to. And, and I, and I would hope that, you know, this is, it's, it's good food for thought.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I know that we have, um, we have a consensus of majority. So I am, uh, I'm going to cross my fingers.
Well, if it makes you feel any better, with that question, if I remember correctly, I think, and I'm, I'm putting words in, in Tim's mouth, but I think he was coming from the point of view of, um, there's, there's some things that a, that a select board person can ask for. And there's others that are totally inappropriate, such as if I called up and said, I want streetlights, water and sewer on my street. And that, that's just inappropriate. Um, but, you know, to convey what you're hearing in the community or something like that, I, I, I don't, you know, that's a, that's a tough question to answer in an interview because it is very nuanced when the questions come in, right?
Depends what the question is, really.
Yeah. And, and, you know, the other thing is, is we keep hearing about how, oh, you're not supposed to go and ask for the streetlight. We don't do that. We don't have to be told over and over again not to do that.
But he doesn't know that.
We don't do that. And, but that's still, I mean, that's, that's a problem in that, in that it's, it's silos again. I don't want to get into silos.
Yeah, I think the, the example he was giving up was a board member going to the DP, directly to the DPW and say, put a streetlight here.
Right.
And that is not appropriate.
Well, and we know that.
Right, right. But he was, he was giving an example of something that isn't appropriate. I think, I think we agree with that.
Yeah.
Um, but that doesn't mean it never happens in some towns.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and there are some towns that have different rules about them, a different, a different charter or a no charter, where that's, you know, that kind of comes with the territory and that would be normal. Um, most towns, it's not the case.
He did say, I remember what the question was, that I didn't love the answer. So I said, so I could email the DPW director and CC you, cause that's what, what the rule was with John, I think, sort of loosely. I think John told me that once. And then, like, or, like, not to give them an instruction, just to ask a question or something like that. Um, and then I think either Bob or Mike made some comment like that too. Like, if you need to email a department had about something to ask a question, just CC the town administrator, especially with all the changes and everything. And he was like, no, just email me and I'll get your question answered. And I was like, no, that's not really realistic, cause sometimes I'm asking something really dumb. You have no idea. So, but I didn't feel comfortable saying that.
I mean, that's a, that's a nuanced question as to, should I ever do this X, Y, or Z? Because it's, it is going to depend.
But I was a little disappointed in the fact that he didn't say, well, that's a nuanced question. So there you go. But that's okay, cause it was, you know.
Okay. Um, so I think I'm hearing that you're in, enough of an agreement to make a unanimous vote?
What do I get if I do that?
Oh.
What do I get?
It's a new industry.
I have to get more, I have to get more. It's negotiation, no burn chicken.
All right, I, I'm on, I'm on board with, with the no burn chicken. Thank, 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 thank you. However, I happen, no, not this piece of paper, it's that piece of paper.
That you wrote all over the back.
I wrote all over the back, but not the front.
Okay, all right. So do we have, is his name Tim or Timothy?
Yeah, you can, I imagine we can go with Tim.
It's Timothy. Should I say?
It is Timothy, yeah.
Yeah.
I'll say.
Okay.
All right. I move the board vote to authorize Municipal Resources, Inc. to make a conditional offer of employment to Timothy McInerney for the position of Northboro Town Administrator. This offer is conditioned upon the satisfactory background interview slash investigation conducted by Municipal Resources, Inc., physical exam if required, and the successful negotiation of the terms of appointment by the select board.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made by Kristen, seconded by Julianne. Any further discussion? Um, we don't even have to do a roll call vote because we're in person. Are all those in favor?
Aye.
I see that as a unanimous vote. Um, thank you very much, congratulations, Tim. And, uh, congratulations, everyone who has gotten us to this point.
Thank you.
And thank you to all the candidates.
Yes. And thank you to the screening committee who got to do this, got to do this twice.
Yeah.
Um, it was a great, we had a couple of different members this time.
Being on the screening committee.
Yeah.
Well, I have, I have to.
Okay, Buzz and Paul, this, this group was a, was a good group and a difficult group to pick from.
We, we, we thank, obviously we thank you. With this, our heart is in Northboro now. We can't wait to come to the fires on the rivers, although I can't.
I expect you to be here with a canoe.
You can bring my grandchildren, it'll be fun.
We totally enjoyed it and we, we thank you. So, interesting, I watched the interviews, and it's all public. I watched the interviews in Littleton on, on Monday.
Okay.
And this discussion was very similar, because they had good candidates, including Clancy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they had a very healthy discussion as to what would be the best fit for the community. They chose a very seasoned manager, because they, they think they need that at this point. I mean, you made your decision tonight based on what you felt is the, is the best fit for the community. But they ultimately voted the unanimous vote for the new town administrator in Littleton. And, but it was a healthy discussion, I'm listening to you folks.
Interesting, yeah.
You, you thought about it.
Yeah.
And then that's all good. You, you did what you needed to do as the elected board in town.
Good, thank you.
Great. Um, so next up, we have scheduled an executive session to talk about said contract that we, um, just voted that we would offer to Mr. McInerney. And I would ask for a motion to go into that executive session.
Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to enter into executive session pursuant to MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21, Subsection 2, to conduct strategy sessions and/or contract negotiations for the town administrator. Due to the chair's determination that a discussion regarding this matter in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the board and to return to open session meeting only to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you.
My, Mike?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I could.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, there should be, going into executive session, should be going into executive session and then.
To adjourn immediately.
To adjourn directly from executive session, not return to open session.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that way we don't have to keep everybody around, we don't, you don't have to go. You, you can do that, you can adjourn directly from executive session, as long as you, you make that known to the public.
I apologize because the one that Laura read was the more recent one that I received. So you, I got your email, but it didn't have anything different in it that I saw, so.
Thanks for catching this. Do you want me to read it again just to be a special?
Yeah, if you would.
Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to go into executive session pursuant to MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21, Subsection, to conduct strategy sessions and/or contract negotiations for the town administrator. Due to the chair's determination that a discussion regarding these matters in an open set meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating power, position of the board and to adjourn immediately following executive session.
Second.
Excellent.
Drew.
Very good. Um, so we have a motion and a second executive session. Motion's need to be roll call votes, so let's do that one.
Aye.
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 All right, we are in executive session now. Um, we'll take a couple minute break.